Then I will call this reg- Call this regular meeting of the San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, April 16th of the year 2024. It is 6:00 PM. Ms. Cordova, please call the roll.
Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mayor Houston?
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Here.
Mr. Gleason?
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Here.
Have a corn present, Mayor.
All right, and our invocation this evening will be given by our chaplain, Mike Hallifield.
Thank you, Mayor. If it be appropriate, please bow your head. Lord, we thank you for this opportunity to gather here tonight. Thank you for your blessings over our city, over our homes, over our families and workplaces. Thank you for our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city leaders and staff. Thank you for their hard work and sacrifice. May you continually bless them abundantly. May you generously give to each of them wisdom, strength and courage to skillfully govern the people in our great city of San Marcos. Give wisdom that produces creative ideas and solutions to problems. Give each of them a sense of welfare and true needs for the people of San Marcos. Give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there may be honest disagreements. And lastly, Lord, we ask that you give our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city leaders and staff a peace that surpasses all understanding in their lives, in their homes and in their family. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
All right, next is our pledges of allegiance, United States and Texas.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Next is our citizen comment period. City council, here's citizen comments at work sessions, workshops and regular meetings. Those wishing to speak, there's a sign up process and if you wish to speak online, you need to do it sooner so that you can get a call in number and a link. Speakers may speak once during the citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. You will have three minutes to speak when you state your name. A timer is displayed on the screen. You will see that the green will start disappearing after you state your name. When the timer is only in the yellow, you have less than 20 seconds left. When the timer is red, your time to speak is up. The mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal assaults, profanity or threats of violence. We have a number of people signed up to speak, so ever so often I'm going to call the names out. If you would, go ahead and start lining up. And our first five will be Virginia Parker, Jared Chumsey, Isla Ruiz, Darla Munoz, and I'm not sure if Mariah Price is here, will be speaking online. So we will start with Virginia Parker.
Hello, Mayor and council members. I'm Virginia Parker with the San Marcos River Foundation. The first topic I wanted to speak to you about was number seven on the agenda regarding drought stages and triggers. The city staff is recommending using the total volume of water available to the city, which is, it would be Edwards Aquifer, Arwa Water, which is Crezo Wilcox Aquifer, G B R A Water, which is out of Lake Dunlap and Canyon Lake. Think back to last year, when the city of San Marcos, and years prior, sold water to the city of Kyle. Now, this year is the first time I can remember driving around the city of Kyle and they've got notices up, like visible signs that say, we're in a drought, you know, conserve water. So they've triggered some drought restrictions, which is great, and they're publicizing them. My point is, if we just assume that we have all this water because we're going to the Crezo Wilcox and we're going to Lake Dunlap, but we are not being the most diligent we can with regards to water conservation, we're not being good neighbors to all of those other locations. The Edwards Aquifer is the only groundwater district that can limit pumping in times of drought. The Crezo Wilcox cannot do that. So, the best outcome, I think, for the city of San Marcos would be that we have two measurements. We total the total number of available acre feet of water, however the utilities department wants to measure it, between all three water sources, see what drought that would trigger, and then compare it to the Edwards Aquifer J-17 well, and do what's more restrictive. Let's be the best water conservationists we can be. I will tell y'all that this Texas state measures the Edwards Aquifer authorities monitoring J-17 well, and that's how they trigger drought. I've also been told, at the last work session, I mentioned that I was not as concerned about the moving from five stages of drought to three, and since that workshop, I've had it pointed out to me, there are people in the area that are still dependent on Edwards Aquifer wells, private wells. If the city moves to a three-stage drought trigger, it might be confusing to some folks. And I think since we're trying to simplify the process, maybe aligning the two is actually more simple. The last thing I want to mention is, I'm happy to learn that the developers at Lindsay Street and North Street have agreed to move down to 80% impervious cover. I would just caution you to be very diligent with your stormwater plans. Thanks.
Our next speaker is Jared Chumsey.
Good evening, council. My name is Jared Chumsey. I'm a volunteer with TAG. I'm speaking to you to oppose the Lindsay Street housing project, but specifically to speak on item number 15. There's not going to be a public hearing, but I would like to see the CUP strengthened pretty considerably. A group of volunteers went around knocking on doors to see how residents at the proposed site feel about potentially being displaced, and the vast majority of them didn't even know that it was happening. Let me give you some highlights of what we found in our door knocking. We spoke with about 20 residents. Of the 20, only about five had heard about it. 60% were students who actually wanted to live near campus but did not want rent by the bed. Four of them were family households with small children. One was elderly and disabled on low income, fixed income. And at least three tenants said that they had just signed their lease within three months. For these reasons, TAG would like city council members to make a motion to add the following amendments to the CUP. For item number 10 on the CUP, which stipulates that there's a minimum of six months' notice to find other accommodations for residents, we suggest that this should be extended to one calendar year, since the historic buildings are going to have basically a year to be demolished or to be relocated. So why not extend that to the rest of the residents of the proposed property site? And then number two, on that same item, the developer agreed to allow five families to move back into the new development at their current or comparable rate. We believe that this should be extended to 10 families, because we've noticed that there are many families in the area who are low income or who could benefit from affordable housing in the city. And why should we extend to 10 families instead of five? It'll take four years to build the new complex, tenants will be gone by then, and when the vistas and the sanctuary lots were purchased by the university, 10% of those tenants were not students. So due to liabilities, the non-student residents were not allowed to renew their leases and were effectively evicted. So even if families were to be allowed to move back in, if the developer sells to the university in seven years, these residents will be displaced yet again, an immediate turnaround, after waiting so long to come back to the same spot. And then lastly, I suggest that you add an additional item, number 15, which is going to include monthly installments to be paid by the developer to the current residents in Lindsay Oaks and the Elms and the historic houses, equal to the current rental rate for the duration of one calendar year. Without this additional amendment, item number 10 is basically useless. So, item number 15 would strengthen item number 10, because the residents will likely be priced out of the city after four years anyway. Thank you so much for your time, and we hope that you strengthen the CUP. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Isla Ruiz.
Good evening. My name is Isla Ruiz. I'm on the leadership team with the tenants advocacy group, and I'm here to oppose the McLean project, also known as the Lindsay North Street project. I implore you to reconsider your decision on the development and vote no. Numerous residents of San Marcos have gathered this evening to express their opposition to the McLean project and the council's decision to approve a development without consulting the community. Through various efforts, including emails, phone calls and door-to-door outreach, we mobilize support for our cause. I'm pleased to share that our petition on change.org has garnered 339 signatures against the proposed rezoning and the further construction in San Marcos. If the neighborhood undergoes rezoning, it will not deter future developments from proposing additional complexes for construction there. The essence of its area is its residential character and should stay that way. Texas State University is actively seeking to buy the land for expanding student dorms. Constructing this development would extend Texas State campus into residential areas. As of April 2024, it has been confirmed there are 40 rent-by-the-bed student housing complexes in the city of San Marcos. Through an open records request, it is discovered that only 27% of these complexes are registered with the city. Numerous issues plague these models, yet they remain unaddressed. Introducing the McLean project to the area will only contribute to the existing catalog of subpar living conditions for renters. Drawing from my recent experience as a Texas State graduate, I offer insights from both the student and local resident perspectives. Having been a lifelong resident of the area, I've observed firsthand the neglect faced by student population, particularly in terms of access to safe and secure housing. Please heed the voices of the community and pay attention to their requests. In conclusion, the collective voice of the community stands resolute against the McLean project. We stand in firm opposition to displacement of tenants residing in the Lindsay Oaks and Elm complexes. Additionally, we vehemently oppose any rezoning initiatives that would pave the way for further construction and developments encroaching into the university, I mean, in the neighborhood by the university. Let us stand together in safeguarding the integrity and character of San Marcos for generations to come. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Darla Munoz. After her will be Mariah Price, and then I'm going to call out some more names. Following them will be Shannon Mattingly, if y'all could come on in. Shannon Mattingly, Ed Terrio, Matt Kenyon, Andrew Salem. Munoz.
Good evening. I'm Darla Munoz, and I'm here tonight to comment on the Lindsay Street project. I was asked why I was fighting this project when we all know that San Marcos is going to keep growing. This is true, but we have the power to decide how and where it grows. That is why we have a preferred scenario map, zoning districts, regulations on conditional use permits and height limits on buildings, and a comp plan that the citizens of San Marcos were asked to contribute to and have. That is why we have elected officials, who we assumed would respect the wishes of the voters and abide by all these regulations. But you have decided to ignore the recommendations of Vision SMTX Plan, the Development Code, Planning and Zoning and Neighborhood Commissions. Maybe you feel not enough people are speaking out against it, but isn't that why we elected you, to handle these things so we didn't have to worry about them? We trusted you to take care of our town. The first argument in favor of this property is that it's a great place for students to live. True, but it's also a great place for employees of Texas State and singles and families who may want or need to walk to work or grocery store, pharmacy, church, the parks. Second argument, it's right across the street from the university. Yes, but as the university grows, more and more neighborhoods will be right across the street. I counted on the preferred scenario map, six neighborhoods across the street from the university right now. You will have set a very dangerous precedent by using this reasoning to grant these four variance requests. How will you legitimately deny the next developer who uses these same arguments? Next argument, there is a need for more housing in town, especially affordable housing. Well, first, anyone who says that a new student complex so close to the university is going to be affordable is wrong. And according to the city's website, there are 30 multifamily housing projects in San Marcos right now that have permits to build. That's over 7,000 units and 10,000 bedrooms. Remember, students can live in multifamily apartments, but families often can't or won't live in student purpose-built. I haven't even touched on the huge traffic problems this development will create downtown, the disregard for the historic overlay, the ruin of the beautiful San Marcos skyline by another seven-story building at the top of the hill, and the inevitable future ownership of this property by Texas State, which will decrease the taxes that so many have said we will get from this project. I ask you to please reconsider your approval of this project. It is not what is best for all of San Marcos. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Mariah Price. Is she online, Ms. Cordova? Okay. Oh, but would Shannon Mattingly, Ed Terrio, Matt Kenyon, Andrew Salem, please come on into the chambers? Somebody's online.
Okay.
We're getting there, but you're next.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Just trying to expedite. Is she on?
She was on, but I don't see her right now.
Okay, then we're going to move along, Ms. Mattingly, and I will come back to her.
Good evening, mayor and council. Shannon Mattingly, Drenner Group, 2705 BK Road, Austin, Texas. Thank you for your time tonight. I just wanted to thank staff and city council and planning commission for continuing to hear our project and work with us on the concerns that we've heard from the neighborhood, from planning commission and council. Staff has worked with Mr. Kenyon regarding all of the conditions that we discussed at the last meeting, and so I just wanted to really kind of quickly talk about some of the things that we've heard tonight. Some of the important things is, you know, the historic properties, the demolition. The applicant has agreed to allow 12 months, as requested, for up to 12 months on the demolition ordinance. The applicant has also agreed to offer rent by the bedroom, as well as traditional leases on both sides of the property, to give an opportunity for more traditional housing for faculty, staff, students, graduate students, whoever might want to look at both sides. I know that's something that we've heard from a lot of the neighbors and even from the groups that have spoke already tonight about concerns with not having just student housing, but having traditional housing. And so, the west side has an opportunity to do that, and then the east side as well. If somebody does not want to do a rent-by-the-bedroom model for their student housing, then they have the opportunity to do that traditional housing as well. As previously mentioned, we have agreed to change the zoning on the west side to CD5 and meet the required parking for that, as well as to look at the opposite side and try to share those parking requirements throughout both. One quick thing is that previously, there was a warrant that was approved for the .85 on the east side, understanding that that, you know, stayed with the property owner previously, but that was something that was previously approved by council and something that we're continuing to look at how we can park both of those projects together based on the parking study that we previously had. Doing lead certification, I know that something was brought up about extending the six months for notification to the property owners and the residents currently. We are fine with doing 12 months instead of six months. I think we talked about that at the last meeting. Not a problem for the applicant at all. 12 months is good. And then, we are still, we would like to see four stories on the west side instead of five. We are looking to do no more than three bedrooms per unit. As you know, with a CUP and student housing, they can go up to four. We are just wondering what every other multifamily would be allowed to do if it was, and what they could currently do in multifamily with four stories and three bedrooms per unit. We are decreasing, we're not asking for 100% impervious cover that you could do in CD5, but 80%, and thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker, I'm sorry, is Mariah Price on? I'm asking Ms. Cordova, if she's in the queue to be able to join us.
She keeps coming on and off. I don't know why, Mariah.
I see her in the panelists. Mariah Price, are you on? If you so, turn on your video and unmute. And now she's gone. Okay, we will go to Ed Terrio next. We'll keep trying.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. My name is Ed Terrio and my address is 120 Lakeview Circle in Lockhart, Texas. I'm here tonight representing Matt Kenyon on his development applications that are before you tonight. From a good planning perspective, we are in full agreement with the city staff on their end condition recommendation for approval, as approved on first reading with the CUP conditions negotiated at your April 2nd council meeting. Staff has recognized, as do we, that the request reflects adherence to good planning principles, such as the reduction of urban sprawl, the increased walkability to school, work and shopping, also the reduction of vehicular trips and the reduction of student housing occupancy in the existing single-family neighborhoods. The agreed-upon conditions will provide, as Ms. Mattingly indicated, for conventional multifamily with a maximum of three bedrooms per unit to the west of North Street. As shown in most existing conventional multifamily projects, three-bedroom units are the norm for families with more than one child. The condition also provides for a consistent transitional height of four stories between North Street and the edge of the existing multifamily zoning at Moore Street. The conditions also provide for a impervious cover maximum that is consistent with the existing multifamily that's in that area. So you will not only be consistent on height, but with impervious cover. Lastly, the compromise conditions have provided for a parking requirement of approximately .8 per bedroom. Depending on the calculations, it could range from .78 to .8 between the east of North and the west of North Street projects. This greatly exceeds both the one space per unit conventional multifamily parking requirement and the .75 per bedroom requirement originally requested in our CUP application. Thank you again for all your patience and perseverance in working with us to establish a good and appropriate project while communicating to the larger development community that this level of dialogue is the blueprint for a successful development in San Marcos.
Our next speaker is Matt Kenyon.
Mariah Song.
We'll get her after this one.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. My name is Matthew Kenyon. My address is 1200 Barton Creek Boulevard, Austin, Texas, 78735. As you realize, and I'm sure you do by now, that I'm not the best public speaker, but over the past several months, I've stood up here and spoke from my heart on what I believe is a great development, which will be a great development for the residents, students, taxpayers, school district, university and the city of San Marcos. I have also expressed a significant amount of concessions that I am willing to make in order for this development to happen and make this a better project for the entire community. I've heard over and over from the city officials, as well as from citizens of San Marcos, that past developers have always stood up here and made a multitude of promises that never end up coming to fruition. I understand that, and for that reason, at P&amp;Z, I made the suggestion that every promise that I make, I would be willing to put in writing and incorporate into the legal documents of this project to ensure that city council and the community, that what you hear from me will be exactly what you get. Over several months, I have listened to feedback and suggestions from neighborhood meetings, P&amp;Z, city and city council, and I have reached out to many of you to help me find solutions and compromises. I can honestly say that I am proud of the way that we have been able to work together over those months to find ways to incorporate these suggestions into this project. I want to personally thank each and every one of you for negotiating in good faith to help make this a better project, especially Mayor Houston for moving on, for moving us to a transitional zoning district, and Councilperson Gonzalez for helping to resolve the concessions regarding an immediate sale to the Texas State University. As you all know, I have made so many concessions to make this project happen, because I believe, along with many others, that this project is in the right location and adds innumerable advantages to both students and residents alike, as well as the city. I have never mentioned this before, but I have one child, and her name is McLean. I have obviously named this student housing project after her, because I consider this my flagship project. I love my daughter and I want her to be proud of me and proud of what I have built and put her name on. So I know this is no guarantee, but it means the world to me. I want to thank you all for your time and consideration, and I will be here all night if there's anything further that I can add or any questions that you may have for me. Thank you.
Let's go to Mariah.
Yes, Mariah Song.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Hello, my name is Mariah Price, and I currently live at Lindsay Oaks Apartments. I apologize that I was unable to attend the meeting in person due to being a graduate, a busy graduate student with two jobs. I wanted to make a comment on the zoning and say that by getting rid of some of the last affordable complexes, you'll be displacing me and people like me, and the other tenants at Lindsay Oaks, many of whom are families and professionals. As this meeting progresses, I hope you think about the people who will lose housing in the immediate future. Currently, I make a limited income TA-ing as a teaching assistant at Texas State University. I'm in my mid-30s and I came from out of state. My first year, I lived in Buta and commuted, because I couldn't afford to rent a room in student housing at $1,000 a room. I don't feel that living with other 20-year-old students is a good fit for me, since I'm closer to 40 than they are. I also am in the last year of my master's program at Texas State, so losing housing while writing a thesis will be detrimental to my career and livelihood. I hope that it is the city you can keep people in mind, like me, and how important affordable housing is to the community before you get rid of our housing. It is your duty to keep, as a, to keep the community, citizens in mind, so I encourage you to do that. This may just be another zoning meeting to you, but to me, those like me, this was one of the last housing options I had. So by getting rid of it, you're displacing people like me from houses that we can afford in the immediate future. So, please keep me and the others like me in mind. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to read out some names so that you can start lining up over on the side. Andrew Salem will be next. Austin Grishell next. Abby Rikelme and Joe Erdeljack. So if you're here, if you could be moseying on over to the lineup. Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Salem. I live at 250 Hummingbird Way, 78655. San Marcos is an amazing city. When I first moved here as a student in 2020, I knew this was a place I could see myself living for the rest of my life. But over the years, I've noticed there needs to be changes made to help support the influx of people moving to this town. These small businesses in town offer many different services that I very much so enjoy. Unfortunately for myself and half of the student population, we- Unfortunately for myself and half of the student population, we have to basically risk our lives to commute to them, and I do not say that lightly. There was a recorded 16 deaths on the road of San Marcos last year, most of which have been or happened on the intersections or I-35 frontages, or intersections that conjoin with the I-35 frontages. I have witnessed or driven by one of these crashes too many times. Students should not have to worry about getting in a life-altering wreck while simply trying to get some Bobcat Quickie. This combined with the horrible traffic density around town causes me to frequently shop at businesses in Lockhart. Even though it's a little further drive, I know there is way less traffic and a higher chance of me getting there with no problems. As someone who aspires to one day be a business owner in San Marcos, this is extremely concerning. I believe allowing developments in close proximity to downtown San Marcos and the university campus would not only be the best and safest option in regard to students, but would also allow the businesses downtown to flourish more than ever imagined. Thank you for your time.
Next will be Austin Greshel, but is Abby Rikelme here? Joe Erdeljack? We have Amanda Smith, who'll be remote, Adam Von Art, and Said, y'all will be next. So if you could kind of get ready. Go ahead.
Hello, y'all. I'm Austin Greshel. I live on 250 Hummingbird Way. I'm a student here. I spoke here the past few times about the economic effects of this issue. I support this project, and I think it's good for the community because there's students like me who are driving to campus three times a day for American Society of Civil Engineer meetings, for classes, to get a workout in at the rec. This is only adding to the traffic complications, or complications for the community. And I also think that this project is good for those around the area, including my girlfriend who lives over there. She walks her dog over by that spot every day over on North Street, and sometimes I'm able to be there with her, but I think a newer development with more lighting and better walkways and just more control for that area will be better. Thank you.
Is Abby Rikelme here? Joe?
I'm good.
You're next.
Oh, nothing to say.
Oh, okay. And we are to Amanda Smith, who is joining us remotely. Is she on, Ms. Cordova?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, yep. You're up.
Okay. I am here today to encourage the City Council to pass a ceasefire resolution. Over the past two weeks, we have seen dangerous escalation in the Gaza Israeli conflict, the genocide that's happening in Gaza. We have seen this conflict escalate to neighboring countries, Syria and Iran, and there is now a critical risk that this conflict could continue to escalate, and the United States will be pressured to be put in a position to get directly militarily involved. It is not just that American men and women would be sent to engage in a war that the majority of the American public believes is not a war we should be engaged in. The majority of the American public believes that there should be a ceasefire now. It is your responsibility as our local representatives to advocate for our community, to the state and federal government, who without our consent have chosen to use our money to fund this genocide, have used our name to provide political support to this. It is your responsibility to advocate for us and to send a message to Governor Abbott and the politicians at the state level, to President Joe Biden and his supporters in the federal government, that they do not have the permission of the residents of San Marcos to use our money and our name to commit genocide. It is your responsibility to send a message that we are not okay with men and women from the city of San Marcos potentially being sent to engage in a war that could have been ended through a very simple ceasefire resolution. The issue is a political issue that has a political solution. It's not one that requires more Americans to lose their money, to lose their lives and their welfare over. So I urge the City Council to pass a ceasefire resolution now, to step up and do your duty to advocate for us towards the state and federal governments that are abusing our money and abusing our good name. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Adam Von Art.
My name is Adam Von Art. I'm here to speak out against the Lindsay Street project. I have personal reasons for this. My child's mother will be displaced from her home. I have professional reasons for this. Apparently, according to the University Star, our developer Matthew Kenyon isn't even working under a legally registered business in the state of Texas. But putting all that aside, I ask whose priorities are we as a city taking into consideration when we continue to allow purpose-built student housing to dominate our town? We are a city of 70% renters, and every one of us deserves a home. I argue that rent-by-the-bed, purpose-built student housing are not homes. The leases don't allow the tenants to choose their roommate. The tenants can be moved from their room at any given moment. The majority of these buildings are horribly maintained in a state of disrepair, and they're new. Now, if your child was going to college in this town, wouldn't you want them to have a safe, private space that they could call their own? Of course you would, right? Students deserve a home. Families deserve a home. These are not homes. These are shoddily-made cash grabs, right, that this city has allowed for far too long because some guy with a bogus company shows up with a big bag of money in his hand, right? I would ask that this council do some serious consideration and do some research into the amount of student housing that we have right now and what the real occupancy rates are. I would ask this council to look at examples of buildings like the local, which are under 20 years old and are falling apart on our streets, because this is not the progress that your constituents, my neighbors, want or need. We need housing for families, and regardless of what some people in this town want to tell you, it's perfectly fine for families and college students to live at the same complexes, right? We're all people. I welcome development. This town is not going to stop growing, but I don't welcome development that alienates families and is predatory of college students, and neither should any of you. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Said Moshe Fagihana. I'm sorry, I never can pronounce that right, but following him will be Eli Doyle online, Gary Gazzaldo, Miguel Arredondo, and Linda Coker.
My name is Said Moshe Fagihana. Good evening, members of the City Council and the Mayor. I'm talking in support of the ceasefire resolution, and I'm going to share the experience of two American doctors, Firuz Sithawa and Mark Permatto, who recently returned from European Hospital in Han Yunus in Gaza. And they published an article on April 11th, and I want to read some of their experience and the horror that they saw in Gaza. They said that as humanitarian trauma surgeons, we have both seen incredible suffering. Collectively, we were present at ground zero on 9/11, Hurricane Katrina, and the Boston Marathon bombing, and 2010 earthquake in Haiti on the first day of those disasters. We have worked in the deprivation of southern Zimbabwe and the horrors of war in Ukraine. Together, we have worked more than 40 surgical mission in developing countries, and we have combined 57 years of volunteering. But we have never seen the cruelty like this genocide in Gaza. So all of these is not even comparable with what happened in Gaza. We made, so they explain, you know, what happened. So they entered Gaza. We made short journey from Rafah Crossing to Han Yunus, where Gaza European Hospital stands as one of the last remaining semi-functional hospitals for more than 2.5 million Gazans, that most of them are children. We walked through the wards and immediately found that evidence of horrifying violence deliberately directed at civilians and children. A three-years-old boy shot in the head. A 12-years-old girl shot through the chest. An ICU nurse shot through abdomen, all by some of the best-trained soldiers in the war, so what they call them the best-trained. No amount of medical care could ever compensate for the damage being inflicted here. Even basic cleanliness is impossible, and the hospitals is just barely hanging on by a thread in terms of functionality. None of the hospitals are functioning. Our limited sleep was constantly interrupted by explosions. So I urge the City Council to pass the resolution, ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Is Eli Doyle ready?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Eli Doyle. I am a San Marcos resident. I am here to urge you to pass the ceasefire resolution to stop the genocide in Gaza. Last time at the City Council meeting, I spoke to the amount of our tax dollars, according to USPCR, that are going to the weapons that are killing the children that Said just mentioned, and that number being a little under $1 million and what our city could be doing instead with that money. Today, I'm going to read some quotes from Jewish Israeli governmental officials about their take on what's going on, because I think that there is some hesitancy to pass the ceasefire resolution with the idea that it would be anti-Semitic, and Zionism is very different than Judaism. It's actually anti-Semitic to suggest that Zionism is Judaism when there are millions of practicing Jewish people all over the globe that are not of that region's descent. So here are some quotes. Joseph Weitz, the former director of the land and afforestation department from the Jewish National Fund, said this, "There is no way besides transferring the Arabs from here to the neighboring countries and to transfer all of them, save perhaps for the Arabs of Bethlehem, Nazareth, and Old Jerusalem specifically. Not one village must be left, not one tribe, and only after this transfer will the country be able to absorb millions of our brothers, and the Jewish problem will cease to exist. There is no other solution." Joseph Weitz also said this, "It must be clear, there is no room for both people in this country. No development bring us closer to our aim to be an independent people in this small country. If the Arabs leave the country, it will be broad and wide open for us, and if the Arabs stay, the country will remain narrow and miserable. The only solution is Eretz Israel, a Jewish state without Arabs." Also, David Ben-Gurion, the first prime minister of Israel, said, "We must expel the Arabs and take their places, and if we have to use force to guarantee our own right to settle in those places, then we have force at our disposal." That was said in 1937. In 1948, during the assault, we must be ready to strike the decisive blow that is either to destroy the towns or expel its inhabitants so our people can replace them. This is something that goes beyond October 7th. The genocide is happening now, and the horror has been going on for centuries.
And your time is up.
Please do your responsibility to fight it.
Next is Gary Gazzaldo.
Hi there, Gary Gazzaldo, longtime San Marcos resident. I came to make some comments on this notorious Lindsay Street development. And basically, I'm asking you to reconsider, stick with the rules, and don't grant the variances. There's been a lot of technical talk about the surveys that have been done and what have you. I'm just here as a citizen and someone who's passionate about San Marcos and reminding you all that your job is to represent San Marcos, full stop. No caveats to that. You know, our society is one of adversary, which is a good thing. You have developers who want to do certain things. You have the town who wants to keep certain things. You have the university. Your job, and the way I understand it, your oath is to look out for the citizens of San Marcos, not to make life easier for the students, not to pave the way for developers, but to keep the charm of the town. Now, I'll end with this, but I'm going to mention it here. I grew up here. It was a charming town that had a university. It's quickly turning into a university that has a used-to-be charming town. Now, do we really need another five, six, seven-story building in downtown? I mean, aren't the buildings there already enough of a blight? I mean, I'd ask you to really consider this. The town is going to grow, but for whom? Like, who is it growing for? What is the point? I've heard the university president talk about, "We want to keep growing, growing." For what? How does that benefit the town? How does it benefit the citizens who live on gravel street and MLK Street? How does it benefiting them? So I would ask you guys to really consider that. Yes, there's going to be growth. The students have to go somewhere, but your first responsibility is what is best for the town. What about our beautiful river? Has the EPA been involved? How many more cars do we really need downtown? And I heard the impassioned plea from the developers. He seems like a nice guy, and he's here to make a buck, but your job is to protect the town, and if you keep allowing this to grow, it's going to be a university with a small town attached. Imagine another, one of the speakers said there's already like 7,000 units under construction. That's 10,000 more people, 10,000 more cars. Just remember, and I would posit this, is that not only is it your job to protect San Marcos, but I would encourage you all to take a muscular stance against the university. Why are they wanting to grow? How does that benefit the town? If the university wants to grow, build it somewhere else where the students are. Think about the citizens of San Marcos. That's my, that's my main message. However, I will also remind about this ceasefire is that it's the citizens of Gaza who attacked Israel, murdered, raped-to-death women, and put children in ovens. I would like to hear some counterbalance on that at these sessions. So stand up for San Marcos, do what's right, stick with the variances. Thank you for your time.
Our next speakers in order are Miguel Arredondo, Linda Coker, to be followed by Ian Roberts, Paige Michelle, Sheri Akri, Clay Chip Smith, Rodrigo Amaya. Mr. Arredondo.
Thank you so much, Mayor Houston. Miguel Arredondo, 200 Patricia Drive, San Marcos, Texas. I come here tonight as a fifth-generation San Marcos native. It sounds like a lot of people have weaponized their length of time here in the community, so might as well speak to how long my family, the Arredondos, have called San Marcos home. There's a lot of anecdotal arguments, both for and against Lindsay Hill, so more, rather than make anecdotal arguments and hypotheticals, I'm going to speak to the tax implications if Lindsay Hill is approved. For the ISD in particular, it would represent almost $600,000 additional dollars in revenue to do critical things for our school district. Last night, it was brought forth by staff that we are trying to close a $5 million budget deficit at the ISD. So some very difficult decisions are going to have to be made to balance that budget, to keep teachers employed, to keep bus drivers on the street, to keep our food service employees paid, and this project would mean the salaries for 10 teachers. It would mean the salaries for 13 parent liaisons. It would mean the salaries for 15 teacher aides, or a larger number. It would represent over 285,000 breakfasts and lunches for ISD students. 285,000. A previous speaker said that you have a number of responsibilities as council members, and as mayor, and I agree with you, but I think more importantly, you have a fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers, and that's to make sure that we have the resources we need to pay for our public safety officials, to pay to keep our streets paved and to keep our sidewalks maintained. And so tonight, I ask you And so tonight, I ask you, yes, listen to the impassioned arguments on both sides, but do what financially makes sense for the citizens of San Marcos. I know you have had to make difficult decisions in this budget process. All of us are having to do less with more, and this is a unique opportunity to not only improve what I would argue is a pretty blighted neighborhood in San Marcos, but also connect sidewalks, bring better lighting and public safety to the area. And I would argue that it takes cars off of our streets. I lived at Vista San Marcos, I lived at Sanctuary Lofts when I was a student at Texas State, and I rarely moved my car throughout the week. I actually had to go to the parking garage several times a week just to start my car because I wasn't driving it across town. Now, when I lived on the east side, when I lived in El Camino Real and attended Texas State, I was driving my car every day. I added to the challenges of traffic in this community. So listen to the folks who want to put apartments on the east side, and we are going to increase traffic. Thank you.
Next is Linda Coker. And if these folks are here, Ian Roberts, Paige Michelle, Shelly Akri, Clay Chip Smith, and Rodrigo Amaya, if you'll go ahead and come in and line up, I appreciate it. Linda Coker.
Hi, Linda Coker. I didn't write anything today, I never had time to get around to, so I apologize. Me speaking off the cuff might be kind of scary to those that know me. But two things. One, the meeting last, two weeks ago, I was in a hotel, the internet was coming in and out. But honest to goodness, I don't know how y'all do all those codes and the zoning and everything. There has to be some sort of zoning between what we have in Houston. It was, I was gobsmacked how complicated it all was, and I applaud all of y'all for keeping up because it was hard. So thank you for that. But I am in favor of the Lindsay North Street project, whatever incarnation we're calling it. I have walked the properties. There is no cultural integrity left in that neighborhood. It is, the, it's, those that are declaring it historic, I'm curious why they haven't been over there saving those houses before now? The, just a question I've had. I agree with Miguel Arredondo, which is also kind of awesome for a change, on the tax issues, and I just, I don't see any downside, other than the people that will have to move eventually. And honestly, the developer hasn't been over backwards with concessions, more than any developer I think we've ever seen in the 30 years I've lived here. And I am impressed by that, I'm impressed by his willingness to work and listen. And I just appreciate what y'all do so much, and I pity you, the difficult decisions that you have to make, so thank you.
Next is Ian Roberts.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name's Ian Roberts. I'm a civil engineer with Kimley Horn, I work here in our local San Marcos office. I was here a few weeks ago to speak with you all, and I just wanted to read a few things that we went over then, that pertains to some of the concerns that we received from the citizens in terms of drainage in the area. And just to get a little bit of stuff out of the way there, the existing development is not in the floodplain, I think, as you all know. And the existing impervious cover present on site is 100% on the east side of North Street, and approximately 80% on the west side. So you can't really generate more runoff than it's already experiencing today. Furthermore, the city of San Marcos has a very robust process to review these types of developments from a drainage perspective. There's the actual site development process, and there's also the watershed protection plans that we submit. That's going to be at least roughly a 12-month review cycle of back and forth between, you know, our offices and the city, making sure that we're not creating an adverse impact to the area. With that being said, with the existing site conditions being roughly 80% and 100% respectively, all we can really do at this point is improve the drainage conditions because the runoff's already there. Whether or not there's a building in place or not, the pavement being present on site itself is creating runoff in the existing conditions of the site. So, you know, through the development process, we actually have an opportunity to improve the drainage situation in the area. And I don't think that it can get much worse, but we can certainly try to help. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Next speaker is Paige Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor Houston and council members. My name is Paige Michelle, and I am here on behalf of the San Marcos Area Chamber of Commerce, Board of Directors, to state our support for the McLean Apartments project, and in particular, the item approving an amendment to the preferred scenario map that will allow this project to be constructed successfully. There are many reasons to support this project, including the tax revenue to the school district, the city, and the county, and the addition of quality housing options for individuals and families in the downtown area. And it's important to note that the arguments made by others against this project, the reasons that they state they're opposing this, would not be resolved by voting against this project. It does not make sense to stand in the way of this intelligent development, so we ask you to please vote to approve all of the items related to this development, and we thank you.
Our next speaker is Shelly Akri.
Thank you, council. My name is Shelly Akri, and I'm a resident of San Marcos, Texas. I was here a couple weeks ago to speak with you guys regarding the ceasefire in Gaza, and I'm here again today to reaffirm that. And I just want to say that if you aren't outraged by the famine that's currently happening, then you either aren't paying attention or you're misinformed. The citizens of Gaza cannot leave. Like, just let that sink in, they can't leave. There is no food, there is no water, they can't leave by sea or they will be killed. This is a man-made famine, and we need to call for a ceasefire now before this escalates and turns into something even more extreme. Now, the human body requires 1,200 calories a day if you were to do absolutely nothing, just lay around and breathe. The majority of our calories are from enzymes and from metabolic processes, and the citizens there aren't even getting nearly that. So over time, they are essentially starving. When this happens, the body starts to shut down, heart rate decreases, breathing decreases, mental function decreases, temperature lowers, which puts people at risk for hypothermia. And then on top of that, those who are injured, especially people who have burns and who have had amputations, they require a substantial amount of calories, especially protein, and they're not going to be able to heal and recover. On top of that, 50%, more than 50% of the citizens there are children. And children take much more impact when it comes to starvation. A child can only survive for about 30 days without food, 32, I believe, is what they have calculated. Whereas adults can survive for about 70 days. With 50% of the population being children, we are looking at a possible mass starvation. And even if we do get aid in there immediately, there's still going to be permanent effects to these people. Because when the body uses up its fat reserves, it's going to start going to the vital organs. And it may not kill a person, but it will affect them for the rest of their lives. And I work with people in physical therapy, and I know how difficult it is and how many hours, not just doctors, nurses, the physical therapists, occupational therapists, how many hours we put into just helping one individual get some quality of life back. And to extrapolate that to the amount of people that are going to need help, it's mind-blowing. And I just ask you guys to please step up, use your voices to speak up for this great state and to recognize compassion when it's needed and to do what's morally right. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Clay Chip Smith. I did see him earlier, is he in the lobby? Our next speaker is Rodrigo Amaya.
Mayor, council, Rodrigo Amaya, 322 Laredo Street. Folks, I've heard discussion about this Lindsay program. Strongly standing in opposition, being a resident of San Marcos since 1987. I've heard intelligent use in that project. I've heard notorious... I was at a commissioner's court meeting in Coma County the other day, they were using words like monstrosity, some of the projects, that's what this is. You can sit up here and stand up here and weaponize taxes, you know, all kinds of jobs, and I walk the campus and all this. They can make promises. Developers come up here and they promise you this and promise you that. First time, shame on them, second time, shame on you for believing all that. Don't fall for it. Try to preserve what's left of our little town. We were here before that campus. Somebody said, "If they want to grow, tell them to grow somewhere else." We like our little town, what's left of it. I happen to drive around, walk around, bike around, and still enjoy some of the things that have been untouched, but I know they're threatened repeatedly. The other thing I wanted to address was that shooting the other day. Folks, we have to have qualified people to address incidents like that. Because I know people are dying up there in Gaza and all that, and my heart is out with all those that are involved. But here locally, at the HEB, a couple blocks away, we're having people get killed. Is it justified, is it not justified? I can tell you, being a resident here since 1987, that police department has conducted its business in ways that are not going to cover it. I know we hear this little, the Texas Rangers are on it, I know there's an independent investigators. I've seen some of their investigations, I'm not impressed. Some of those folks involved, as a former trooper, I worked with some of these folks. Some of their ethical standards are heavily in question. People tend to have a habit of cooperating instead of standing up for what's right. That's what we need right now. The other day, I read a little quote that said that leadership is an action, it's not just a title. Just to have a title and run around town and say I'm this, and I'm that, and I'm on this committee, sounds cool, looks cool, but are you really qualified and fit to be in that position? Sadly, I can tell you in my 50 years of living, I moved here when I was 13. I have repeatedly witnessed folks that I thought were going to get elected and do something good, they have failed. People just tend to go with the flow. It's just a paycheck. These are lives that are being affected by decisions that are made here at commissioner's court, at the headquarters at the Capitol. Please do what needs to be done so that the people here know that you stand with them. Thank you.
And I believe Clay Chip Smith is with us after all.
Thank you so much. My name is Clay Smith. The address is 434 North Comanche. This is the address of our prayer hall for the community, for our community here in San Marcos. We're immediately adjacent to agenda items 4, 5, 6, related to the Lindsay North Street project. We're excited about this project. For us, we do our prayers five times a day, early morning, middle of the day, and late at night. And being close, having housing like this close by is very exciting to us. We're excited about this project. I had a, I did a little survey with our community on the topic of parking. For our undergraduates, we're less than one-quarter of our undergraduates with cars, and we're at less than half for our graduate students. And so I think, from what I understand, of the parking, parking, parking per apartment, whatever is assigned to it, I think we'll be below, I don't think we'll be using our fair share of parking. So if we wanted to go lower on parking requirements, we'd be okay with that. By the way, I made a calculation as an engineer. I can buy an acre out on the other side of I-35 that parks 167 cars for about $3,000 a car. That would save my students an effective cost for parking at this property if you were to reduce it by that amount and use Uber to just keep your car stored there for when you needed it. It would save my students about $1,300 a year in rent, in rent for the apartment. In other words, having remote parking is, would be a net savings for my students rather than paying for a full parking garage immediately next door. Bottom line is, I'm excited about this project. Having a place to go walk to very nearby is great for us. Thank you so much for hearing this project. May God bless you all in your work. It's a great work that you do to manage this city. May God put goodness in that, and thank you very much for your time.
Okay, and that ends the citizen comment portion of our program this evening. Ms. Cordova, would you read item one, please?
Receive a step presentation of the quarter-end December 31st, 2023 investment report and provide direction to city manager.
Good evening, council. He's Myle Garcia, the Assistant Finance Director. The presentation before you is mandated by the Public Funds Investment Act. We are required to report interim reports to you on our investments. The presentation for this quarter is for quarter-ending December 2023. The portfolio has a balance, portfolio has a balance of $339 million. This presentation was also presented to the Finance Audit Committee on March 18th. Next slide. The overview of the economy is one of the tasks the finance department takes on to monitor due to that it affects our investment portfolio. The federal government or the committee, as we have reported before to you, that over 2022 and 2023, the feds have adjusted that rate 11 times or increased it 11 times. The last one was in July 2023. Their efforts is to reduce inflation, and they're aiming that it would reduce it by at least 0.75% here within 2024. The inflation for the reported quarter, it's the consumer price index at 3.4, but if you back out the food and energy, we would be at 3.9 for the reporting quarter. The unemployment rate for the reporting quarter of December 2023, the local unemployment rate would be at 3.1, at the state level would be at 3.5, and the US would be at 3.5%. Next slide. On the total portfolio, quarter-ending results, if you look at that heading under December 2023, you look at the par value, we were at $339 million in comparison to the previous quarter of $346 million. Of course, that's the revenues coming in, expenditures going out, so the net of that, us paying personnel, paying our vendors, and then whatever revenue is coming in. So there is two items to note on there. If you look at the asset type on the far left, you have the pools and the securities, and between quarter-ending September to quarter-ending December, you see an increase to the pools in the money market, which is that MMA money market, of over 90 million. So what's happening there is on the securities, we had several maturities and calls, and so the minute they mature a call, they get deposited right back into our pools or money market. And in the following quarter, you'll see that we reinvest that back into securities. To the lower of that slide, you're going to see the current quarter average yield and the rolling 12. So the city's portfolio is at 4.82, and we compare that to our six-month and 12-month treasury bills, and if you see, they're at 5.46 and 5.24. And then for the rolling, it's 5.29 and 5.10%. Down at the bottom, you're going to see the interest earnings over that first quarter at $4 million, just over $4 million. Same period last fiscal year, December 2022, we're at $2.6 million, so that interest rate is bringing in some revenue on interest earnings. Next slide. The investment value by fund type. So the total portfolio was at $339 million. If you look at that first bar and the third bar, the total of that 122.3 and the 217.2 gives you that 339 total. The green section identifies the reserve portion, and in the blue is your regular funds. Next slide. We, on this slide, we're giving you a breakdown of that for the government types, which is a consolidated by fund, and so you'll see what the reserves are, which is your general fund reserves, and the debt service fund reserves, which are giving you the 26 million, and then the remaining ones are all other, is the 95.7 million totaling the 122. Next slide. On the enterprise portfolio by fund, which is a business-type fund, electric, water, so forth, you have your reserves totaling Uh, you have your reserves totaling the twenty-two point seven million. All your regular funds, a hundred and ninety-four million, totaling the two hundred and seventeen point, uh, one million. The Public Funds Investment Act also requires that we have a local policy in place. Our local policy, if you look at allowable column, that is how we have the funds allocated and invested or that's allowed to invest in. And again, you will notice column, the last column, the twenty-three, quarter four, and then quarter one for twenty-four. Increase-decrease between the federal securities and the local government pools and the money market. There was an increase-decrease. Again, goes back to what I had mentioned on the maturities and calls on some of those securities and they just get deposited back into our money market and local government pools. Uh, last slide. Uh, yields as compared to benchmarks. So I had mentioned the average T-bill in the six-month, twelve-month. So we start at the green line with the little triangle and the blue. Those are your one-year, six-month T-bills. Uh, and then the other four, starting with the gray, blue, and then orange, and then that yellowish color are the city's funds. And so, um, slowly we creep up and follow what the, the feds are doing with the interest rates as we're investing our funds. Comments or questions?
I see no hands raised from the others. We can continue. Um, with... This concludes item one, though, correct? Okay. And, okay, so Ms. Cordova, if you'll read item two.
Receive a step presentation of the quarter end December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three financial report and provide direction to city manager.
That would be me again.
All right.
Ismail Garcia, the Assistant Finance Director. So before you is the unaudited financial activity for quarter ending December twenty twenty-three. Um, this report was also presented to the Finance Audit Committee back in March eighteenth. Uh, the report is just a summary of financial activity for the major operating funds. That would include the general fund, hotel tax, water, wastewater, stormwater management, electric, resource recovery, and airport funds. Next slide. We'll start with the general fund. To the right there, we have both listed the fiscal year twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-three for that first quarter. Pretty in line except for revenues. The major contributor to the revenue difference between twenty-four and twenty-three for the same period is the property taxes collected in twenty-three. We're early, uh, incoming for twenty-three. Um, other items affecting it would be, uh, sales tax that the management team has been providing you, uh, information on, uh, as it, uh, as it has decreased for early in this fiscal year. But for, in total, uh, it seems to be aligned with, with, uh, this prior fiscal year, except for that revenue lagging behind on that property tax. Next slide. We'll go over the general fund revenues by category. Uh, again, I will mention the property tax. If you compare the twenty-four actual to the twenty-three actual, there is an eleven point six million difference recognized between the two fiscal years. That is the major contributor on that lagging behind on the revenue reported for between the two quarters of fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four. Also licensing permits, um, down three hundred and sixteen thousand in comparison to, uh, quarter ending four and twenty-three. And, and then, um, the other one would be the charges for services early in the fiscal year, getting started on the programs that are rolling out with the adopted budget. Next slide. Go through the general fund expenditures by category. Um, so again, some of the contributors keeping it, uh, within the, below the twenty-five percent for that first quarter. We have contracted services down, uh, I'm sorry. There's a, up in comparison to the prior year. But also then we have, um, capital outlay that is down from the prior quarter. Again, reminding you that management has provided information on the shortfall of sales tax. Uh, and so management team has implemented the contingency plan of cutting back on expenses and one being suspending capital outlay and in the managed hiring program. Next slide. We'll move on to electric utility fund. Again, to the right, fiscal year twenty-four, fiscal year twenty-three comparison, pretty much in line with, um, comparing the same timeframe between the two years. Um, there was a planned budget for ending, closing of fiscal year twenty-three for use of fund balance of one point one million for three bucket trucks. That will be, um, purchased within the twenty-four year. Uh, we'll move on to the next slide, water wastewater utility fund. Again, pretty much in line with the prior fiscal year, same timeframe. Uh, the one thing to keep in mind on, on these, um, enterprise funds, electric, water, wastewater, on the expenditure side, we have the debt payments that don't come in until February and August. And so that will change as we report in future quarters for you. Next slide, stormwater management fund. Um, again, here, pretty much similar to prior fiscal year around the same timeframe. Uh, no major difference, um, in, in comparing the two. Next slide, resource recovery. Um, so pretty much in the same, uh, the major, uh, expense to the resource recovery would be our refuse collection contract that we have. For quarter ending December, we had not made any payments on that contract. But come February, January, February, we already paid one point six million, um, out of that contract. Next slide, airport fund. Uh, pretty much similar comparison from the timeframe in fiscal year twenty-three to twenty-four. Um, the only thing on the revenue lagging behind would be tenants, uh, with lease rent payments there at the airport. Some have annual leases and just depending when their annual lease is up, they make that full amount. And so future quarters would reflect that revenue increase. Next slide, hotel tax fund. Based on the comparison of twenty-four to twenty-three, pretty much in line. Uh, now, I do want to point out that just the hotel tax alone in fiscal year twenty-three at the same time last year was, we were at nine hundred and seventeen thousand. For twenty-four, out of that one point two that you see, it's one point one million of hotel tax. So we're up a hundred and eighty thousand for that first quarter in comparison to fiscal year twenty-three, or nineteen percent. And then as far as, um, actuals in twenty-three total, four point eight-three million, but we've budgeted four point seven-one million to be on the conservative side. Um, and that concludes this report. If there's any comments or questions related to that information.
Questions? Don't see any hands raised. We've got two council members online. Okay. That's, thank you very much for a comprehensive report that is also very enlightening.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, and next. I'll go ahead and read it real quick. Receive a presentation from Deloitte and Touche on the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, CDB GDR, Quarterly Internal Audit Report, including housing program activities and provide direction to staff. Ms. Cordova, Ms. Reyes, who's providing this one for us?
Deloitte and Touche.
Are they online?
Should be online. Let's see.
Oh, hold on. She's in the attendee room, Ms. Cordova. They both are. I'm sorry I distracted her from that. They weren't in what last time I looked.
We are here. Thank you.
Good to see you.
And Stephanie, thank you so much. Uh, this is Kathy Schortfeger, Senior Partner at Deloitte, responsible for our services with the Community, um, Development, um, Block Grant for Disaster Recovery Services. We're going to report on two reports tonight. Um, I have with me my colleague, um, Carlos Diaz. I'll present quickly on the Q-three, Q-four, uh, quarterly standard reviews. And then Carlos will cover our special report on the housing program. Um, our, uh, past two quarters, uh, we, we weren't able to, uh, be on the agenda this last time. Uh, so we'll be presenting the Q-three report, which covers April through June of last year, as well as the Q-four report, July through September. As with prior reports, our scope of that particular, uh, evaluation is to look at the design and operating effectiveness of the internal controls over the finance, purchasing, and operational performance of the Community Development Block Grant. Um, we look for compliance with federal, uh, regulations governing the grant as well as compliance with city policy and procedures put in place uh, around the disaster recovery activities and the city's compliance with the overall, uh, US Housing Urban Development Action Plan. We look at, uh, all procurements, uh, any change orders, any contract amendments or new contracts. We test a sample of expenses that occurred during each of the quarters. Uh, we also look at drawdowns of federal funds to match to expenses and we follow up on any prior year audit reports. Uh, we're pleased to say there are no, uh, outstanding prior year audit findings that have not been addressed by the city. We also do not have any findings either in Q-three or Q-four. Uh, all the procedures passed the required test and we're happy to congratulate the staff on another outstanding quarter. Um, if there are no questions on the quarterly report, uh, I'll, we will move to the housing report. But first, let me ask if there are questions.
Are there questions? Please proceed.
All right. Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you. So, uh, lastly, we are, we have, uh, for you our completed, uh, housing report program. This report was a result of our annual risk assessment that outlines the schedule for our deep dives into each of the grant-specific programs. During that time, we reviewed the housing programs policies and procedures, individual program participant files and contract monitoring for compliance with federal guidelines, the city's CDBR action plan. Overall, good things. Uh, it's a good report, a good review. It was a, a robust review. We only had, uh, two recommendations for it. Uh, one was related to file retention for, for future city audits. And the second one was related to closing out individual participant funds. The report concludes the city's management response to each of those recommendations and respects the city's responses of those, um, on those responses, position, on those responses, I apologize. I also want to highlight the amazing effort of the housing staff, especially Carol, Irma, and Sylvia for working with us on completing this report. They did a heavy lift, so their time and effort is really appreciated and does not go unnoticed. Uh, anyways, um, that's a brief overview of the housing report. If you have any questions or comments, you can direct it towards us. We'll answer them with, uh, with the, or with our best capacity.
Any questions? No questions here, so thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right. We'll move on to our consent item agenda, which is four through fourteen. The following ordinances, resolutions, and other items may be acted upon by one motion. No separate discussion or action is necessary unless desired by a council member, in which case it shall be considered in its normal sequence after the items not requiring separate discussion. Um, counsel, I need to pull four, five, six, and seven. And I'm looking for a motion. Uh, does anybody have anything that they would need to pull? No?
Mayor, did you say four?
I did say four.
I'll second that, Mayor.
Well, I'm sorry. Was that a motion from Ms. Garza? I thought that was a question. You're asking if, if four was pulled, correct?
Right, right. Because otherwise I'll pull it. But if you pulled it, then we're good.
We'll share it. Um, okay. Then I will seek a motion to approve items eight through fourteen.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Prather, seconded by, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. So we will vote on the consent agenda first. Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott? Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Um, I, for the exception, I can find, I think it was seven and eight.
I pulled seven. So what about eight? Did you want to pull it or?
I don't want to pull it. I just want to vote no on it.
Vote no on, oh, okay. Oh, no? No. Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Then we have, um, six, four, and one against. Okay. So counsel, we've got just a few minutes. Uh, you saw that I pulled five and six to be discussed after item fifteen, which is going to make that easier, more sense. Are y'all good if we go ahead and, and knock out four and seven and then take our ninety-minute break? Y'all good with that? Okay, uh, Ms. Cordova, we will go with item four next.
Consider approval of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash fourteen on the second of two readings, amending chapter thirty-four, article seven, rental property standards of the San Marcos City Code by updating the regulations governing short-term rentals, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflict ordinances, and providing an effective date.
Mr. Carr? Hold on. This isn't a public hearing, so I need to get a motion first. Sorry, my bad. Looking for, was that Mr. Gleason online? Motion to approve?
Yes, ma'am. It was motion to approve. Thank you.
All right. Uh, motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by... Anyone?
I'll second it for discussion.
All right. Seconded by Mr. Mendoza. I'm sorry. I've, I've done what I need to do now. Mr. Carr?
All righty. So there were some few changes and so to make it, uh, very transparent on what changes were, uh, made from the first reading to this reading, I've got two slides, just cover them real quick. So we are replacing local contact person with local responsible party and that's throughout the document. In the definitions section, we're adding a little bit change to the, uh, agent and just adding local contact to the local responsible party. It's just what people are kind of used to hearing.
Okay.
Next slide. And then the other changes we had, um, in the tenant information, where the, they have to provide information to the tenant, we're adding the notice of potential flood hazards to include escape or evacuation routes from the neighborhood. And then in the records and reporting section, we're adding, upon request, for the purposes of reconciling hotel occupancy tax and middle discrepancies. And that's, we do not want all the records. Just when there's a discrepancy between what they should be reporting and what they are reporting. And then the last is, just clarifies for the quarter, it's based on the calendar year.
Okay. And I will make a motion to accept those, um, amendments. And I would appreciate a second on that. Uh, we have a second from Mr. Scott. And so let's vote on these amendments first. Uh, are there any discussion?
Now, these particular amendments.
Okay. Let's knock out these amendments, then we'll go back to the, to the main motion. Okay. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez? Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Seven. Okay. So, uh, back to the main motion as amended. Questions, comments, concerns, amendments?
I, I do have some concerns. So there's, you know, our last meeting, you mentioned, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater and I agree with that. And there's, there's some stuff in this ordinance that I like, like the enhanced fines, the enhanced, um, measures to make sure that short terminals are, are safe. There's a lot of enhancements in regards to public safety enforcement mechanisms, fines and such. And I think that can address a lot of our public safety concerns, concerns about bad actors in neighborhoods. But the one concern I have is the, the type one, type two, the distance, you know, But the one concern I have is the type 1, type 2, the distance, you know, the number allowed in a block, you know, making that down to one. I just see that, I feel like we're like picking winners and losers. And also, in, like, for example, where I live, from my bedroom, I can literally see several short-term rentals from my bedroom windows. And I've seen it where it's been a great benefit to our neighborhood, and I've seen it where it hasn't. The one that is a great benefit, like when we have family come and visit, and we only have a three-bedroom house, so we rent the cottage in our neighbor's backyard, and it's been a great addition. It looks beautiful. It looks lovely. I get to meet new people that come back there when I'm in my backyard and wave at them and stuff. It's been a great addition to the town. And what I'm trying to say is, I don't want to pick, well, if someone else wouldn't pull that permit first, you know, that other people wouldn't be able to have those same opportunities. And I think probably the best way to address that is having some type of amendment that would exclude the type 1, type 2, if the owner of the short terminal is a San Marcos or Hayes County resident. Because I think what that would do is prevent a lot of institutional investment of like people buying up properties, you know, and just making them short terminals. And I don't, I'm not really sympathetic with those type of short terminals, because I think when those players start buying up properties, that's when you start having a lot of missing landlords that are not there when there's problems. But when you have skin in the game, like this is your home, I live in this home, I live in this town, I live in this county, I think we would be able to address institutional investment of short terminals while also allowing the mom and pops in our neighborhoods.
I'll let staff address that. If there's any issues with that. Mr. Gary?
I was just wondering if you wanted to go down that road unless there was a second in the, but. If there was a motion, actually motion on the floor.
There's not a motion yet, but we're in discussion.
I want to see my other colleagues' appetite for this, because I know when we voted on this last time, I think it was a 5-2, could have been a 4-3 vote. Like, I voted for it because, like I said, 80% of this ordinance I like, and.
Well, let's let staff answer that if you're okay with it, or we'll be here all night. And I don't think any of us want to do that. So let's go ahead and let them answer. I get what you're saying, and I think we've got it. Thank you. Appreciate your point of view. Mr. Gary, or Mr. Carr, whomever, are there any issues with what Mr. Prather wants to do?
No, and that was put in just because of past comments from the council on an overabundance of short-term rentals. And so that would just stagger them out a little bit. We do have options in there to address behavior, so that would be fine. It's just what the council feels is if that distance piece is important or not. From our standpoint, either way, it doesn't matter.
And to a degree, like, we could keep the distance in there, but basically you get an exemption, and it's like, no, this is my home. Government, you're not going to tell me what I'm going to do with my own castle, right? If I went and ran out of bedroom for a week, you're not going to be able to tell me I can't do that, because someone else down the street pulled a permit first, right? So that's my main intent.
I think we brought that up the first time, and I thought that was going to be have a workaround, because that was very concerning, almost like a lottery. So I'd definitely be in support of a motion. If you don't make it, I will.
Yeah, I'm fine with removing it, totally. I mean, it's super difficult to enforce. It's super difficult to measure, like, I'm fine getting out, removing the distance part.
And if I can, just for clarification, what I was hearing, I heard one remark about perhaps distinguishing between residents and non-residents. I prefer not to have full legal discussion in here, but I'd like to, I think that's something I'd need to look into, because there are some case law that talks about certain types of distinctions in this realm that may or may not, you know, raise issues of equal protection or not. I'd like to look at that distinction.
So I've thought about, is, well, like, underoccupied?
Now, there's a difference, I know we've talked about institutional, people who live on-site at the place they're renting versus those who don't.
Well, maybe if they don't even live on-site, like, hey, we're leaving for the summer, we're going to put our place up.
But your issue is simply within the block, correct?
So the distant, I mean.
If we did away with the block thing, is that the main difference between type 1 and type 2? Okay, so if we did away with the block restriction, then that resolved the concern that you have? But did you want to keep the block restriction? We discussed this when council first did short-term rentals, and we said, no, we weren't going to do that. I mean, we've got different people on now. So if there's a motion at this point, let's see if we've got a motion to amend, and tell us what you want the motion to be.
I would make a motion to remove the, I don't know if it'd be type 1, type 2 portion of this, or the block feet. Sam, can you help me out with?
Which is it that you want to do? But if you want to remove the limitations on how many can be on a block or 660 linear feet totally, then we can take that out.
And that would be very easy on the definitions in type 1. The last sentence is, may only have one operating short-term rental operating on a block or 660 linear feet on the same street or whichever is more limiting. If you take that sentence out.
And then all the other references as type 1 and type 2 are still okay?
I think that'll work. I think, so, like I said, it's the enhanced enforcement in this ordinance. I really think if we have people that are bad actors, we're going to give code enforcement the ability to have stricter enforcement, more costly fines, and revoke people's permits to do this. My one hangup is, I just don't want to pick the winner and loser for each block, whoever gets the first permit.
Yeah, there's a bunch of information in here about 1 and 2, so there'd be more work than just deleting that one sentence, I think. But, so is your motion to delete that one sentence under type 1, that has the block limitation?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So. I have, I heard a second from Mr. Scott first, so I will give him that one, and this is remove block length. Ms. Garza, did you have more on this particular item, or are your concerns on other items? Because we've got an amendment on this one.
It was on that one.
Okay.
It was it, yeah.
Okay, because I saw your hand still up. Comments, concerns on this particular amendment? Then we'll go back to the.
Yes, ma'am. My concern, I understand where you're coming from. I guess my question would be is, what if it's somebody whose parents have a house there and they live, you know, on the other side of town? Are they allowed to go ahead and just have, they use a short-term rental even though they're not living on that block, but they still are residents of San Marcos?
Well, I think we're not going to do the owner occupy. We're just removing the block.
Well, I know, but your reason for that was, like, let's say there's somebody who is right next door, and they just weren't first to get that permit. It'd be the same thing if somebody lives across town that has a house that's across from you, they want to turn it into an Airbnb or a short-term, but somebody down the street got it before they did it.
Yeah.
So let's say there's eight people on a townhouse block that decided to do the same thing. Is it just going to be the first person that shows up that lives there, or are you going to allow everybody that signs up? So we could have a block completely full of short-term rentals.
If we had the residential, like, the owner occupy, if they're a resident of San Marcos, I think that would, I mean, there's not that many options for people in the city or the county to buy up that many short-term rentals. I really want to protect current homeowners that live in town that want Airbnb their properties.
Oh, I understand, but I'm worried about those individuals, which there are several in town who have a dozen, doesn't have properties that they've been grandfathered into. Is there any way to regulate them from overtaking blocks? Like, say they want to go ahead, and let's say there's a house for sale that's being foreclosed right in their block, they want to go ahead and just turn that into an Airbnb, because they're residents of San Marcos, and they can. Is that okay?
Yeah, would your residency part still apply to 12 houses?
Yeah, right now, I think I got a, I've uncertainty if we even have the ability to do that. The way it's, the pending motion is, it's irrelevant where the owner of the unit lives. So whether you're a local resident, whether you live close by or far away, the bottom line is that if it's in a predominantly single-family neighborhood, I think under type 1, there would be no restriction on the number on a block or per linear feet anymore.
I just keep bringing it back over and over again, and I have since I got on council, even planning and zoning Riviera Street, right there next to St. John's off of, I mean, that entire side of the block that's on the river is Airbnbs.
Short-term rentals, please.
Short-term rentals.
Thank you.
We consistently get complaints from the residents who have been on the other side of the block for 30, 40, let's say even generational times. I'm just concerned about them turning into, I mean, that.
Two points to that. First of all, the new requirements and enforcement that we're approving should help end and, you know, maintain more of that. More importantly, there's people out there that need extra help, you know, with paying taxes and increases like that. This could really have a value, just like ADUs and stuff like that.
At what point do you become a hotel yourself? If you have three or four properties, and you turn them all into short-term rentals, aren't you a hotel? Aren't you turning into?
Wait, I have a question. Do people, do people on Riviera Street, it's all owned by the same person, or is this like a hypothetical you're trying to like exercise right now? Like, have we seen what you're describing, or is it just like a concern?
I live a block and a half down.
But my question is, they own, the same person owns all of that?
They are.
Gotcha.
But how many of those houses are short-term rentals on the river side of Riviera Street?
Everyone on that side. The only person who is actually living on-site is at the very corner. That's the only person who lives on there or is resident?
And the ordinance is still, you can only have one, so I can't have five or six. And that's whether it's a corporation, you know, we can't just LLC a different name, and so I've got five under. We'll be looking at whose members of those LLCs are, however the legal standpoint is, so you hopefully can't get around that. But it's, you can have one in the city.
That works.
Regardless of.
And then how many, like, is it like a three-strike? You know, when do they like, hey, your permit's now been pulled?
Well, that's one of the pieces that we added that I think will be beneficial, is so we can either revoke, because that's going to be, that what wakes people up is not making money. So we can either revoke, which we'll do first, and then suspend, and there's different time periods for it. And they have the right to appeal. And I really don't care if somebody gets suspended and then they repeal it because, and they win because they go, well, we're going to do this and this, we understand. Our goal is just to have a good neighbor.
I really think it's that enhanced enforcement aspect to this ordinance, I really think will address a lot of it. I just don't want to pick who, you know, who got the permit first in that street. So the motion we have is.
Is to remove the block, one per block requirement.
Can I make one comment?
Please.
We'll either have to have another one, or can we add under, please, under the 34808 to types, we need to remove number A1, because that says may be no closer than the 600 linear feet.
There's going to be a lot of changes if this passes. So, Mr. Gary, well, let's see if it passes, and then we'll see.
I have a question, ma'am. Can't you just say?
On this one?
Yeah. Can't you just say in conjunction with anything related to?
That's where I'm going, so.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see if it passes first. And then, because if it doesn't pass, we don't need to go there. But then I'll ask Mr. Gary about that. Okay, so the motion, I don't see any hands online, more conversation? Okay, turn your microphones on, because we're going to go around the table, and we're going to vote on, the motion is to remove the limitation of one per block, and then there's a distance. It is, it's kind of hard to see up there. If that were enlarged, it would be helpful, but I'm going to read this. It's in this type 1 definition, to strike, may only have one operating short-term rental operating on a block or 660 linear feet on the same street, whichever is more limiting. That's what the motion is, is to strike that. Let's vote, Ms. Cordova. Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Hewson?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
No.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
The motion passes, 4 to 2, no's. I believe it's five. I'm sorry, yes, 5 to 2. 5 to 2. Okay. Back to the main motion as amended. That was a tough one, and I don't know. Anything else on this short-term rental? Ms. Garza, did you have anything else? No. Okay. Anybody else?
You going to make a motion?
No, we have a motion on the table. It's been amended twice. And so now, since we removed that, can we just allow staff to take care of all the cleanup on that?
Yes, mayor, that is an option to allow staff to make changes throughout, to be consistent with that.
With the motion that we passed. All right, thank you. We have a main motion, it's been amended twice. Any other concerns, thoughts? Ms. Cordova will vote on the main motion as amended. Mayor Hewson?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
No.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Motion passes, 5 to 2. All right. And it is 7:47. I said we'd do a break after 4 and 7, but I didn't realize we would be this long. So we're going to take a break. We will start our break at 7:47. I'm looking at this clock up here, I know that's behind. Let's be back in our seats, ready to go at 7:55.
And thank you, mayor and council, for taking the time on this one.
Thank you. To our meeting at 7:56, our next item is item 7. Ms. Cordova.
Consider approval of ordinance 2024-17 on the second of two readings, amending Chapter 86, Article 2, water conservation of the city code pertaining to water use restrictions during drought conditions, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeat of any conflicting provisions, and providing an effective date.
Motion approved.
Motion from Mr. Scott, seconded by?
I'll second that.
Mr. Mendoza? Mr. Horth, you here to address questions?
I am, and if you'd like, there were some questions that came in on message board and from citizens.
First, if you'd like, I can go ahead and address those.
And I think some of those, there is a big overlap. So yes, if you would address those, thank you.
Scott Horth, Director of Utilities. Thank you, mayor and council. Also, I have Assistant Director Paul Kite here, so I'd like to start off by addressing some of the questions that came up. Hopefully, that'll answer some of your questions, but Paul's here to answer any of the questions about the mechanics of how the ordinance is structured, the changes that were made, and how we would work through that. So just in no particular order for the questions that came in this week, you know, a couple questions came in about the number of stages that we have. So we currently have five stages. We suggested to you that we go to three stages. For some background, SAWS has three stages, and then their fourth stage is considered an emergency stage that can be declared by the city manager. MBU has four stages, City of Kyle has three stages. We've been in five, so just kind of say there's not a consistency amongst Edward Rocker for users as to how many stages you have. And so I know there was a question about that. So that's clearly your decision on the level of detail you want between the stages. But again, the reason we pulled it down from five to three was it was literally only one line difference in two of the stages, and so it really didn't make sense for our citizens, and it was hard for them to track. So we think three is the right stages, and hope you support that. Next, I would like to say that, you know, because of the past city council and the planning and direction from. a diverse portfolio of our water supply system now that maybe some of the other folks don't have. Certainly, the city of San Marcos has not always had that. One of the advantages that that allows us to do, particularly in a couple of months when the Alliance Regional Water Authority, two-point-four million gallons a day comes online, is that it lets us consider some other aspects of both our drought response and our contingency planning. So with that in mind, that kind of leads us up to, you know, so how do we get into our different drought restrictions? So the Edwards Aquifer Authority, one of the questions that keeps coming up about their stages, so just to lay the groundwork for that is to say, the authority does not mandate drought restrictions. What the authority does is, based on the science, based on the drought of record and how much water's in the aquifer, they assign a certain amount of water rights to each of the entities that have rights to draw the water out. As we move in and out of Edwards Aquifer drought stages, it changes the capacity, the volume of water that each of us is allowed to take. Paul and I, our partners at GBRA that runs surface water plant and our system, we monitor that weekly, daily, monthly. We project out our end-of-year usage and make sure that we don't have any potential for violations, that so we're not, we don't have any history of overdrawing, don't intend to have that. But to be clear, we absolutely do need our, to use our Edwards water. We need that technically because it allows us to maintain our pressure planes, maintain pressure in our system. There's a certain amount of Edwards water that until ten years from now, when we've completed a lot of CIP projects that integrate the system in a different way, we'll always have a significant draw of Edwards water. But also, operationally, financially, Edwards is our cheapest water supply by a factor between two, three, or five times our other water supplies. So to reduce pressure on rate increases, we optimize the use of our Edwards water. We have X amount we have to take technically to operate our system, and the remaining margin, we try and optimize that to take rate pressure off. Right? So we use, we intentionally use our Edwards Aquifer water. Now, again, science says that we're allotted that water and the Edwards Aquifer will, will be maintained and stay pristine and, and be a long-term viable water supply for everybody as long as nobody overdraws, and we don't. So we're allotted that water. We take it. It's beneficial to the community and to our ratepayers. And unless we get different direction from council at some point, we, you know, operationally, we still intend to take and use, you know, our Edwards water that we're allotted with the drought restrictions in place to make sure that we only use what we're allotted. So that's an important factor, too. And then finally, you get down to the, you know, the parts about the triggers and how do you trigger. So we have the capacity conversation over here. What water do we have? How do we provide that to our citizens? How do we have to have different sources to operate our system? And then there's that drought restrictions itself. The drought restriction ordinance then tells you that for our contingency plan to try and reach target levels of, of actual use reductions, what are the things we want our citizens to do? How many times can you run your sprinkler system, irrigation system versus hoses, soaker hoses versus hand ones? Those kinds of things. And those are the things that you target. So if council, you know, looks at this recommendation and says, we know we're going to use this amount of Edwards Aquifer, the drought restrictions that you put in place actually don't affect that use. What it affects is all that margin of the additional water supplies that we've been purchasing all these years. That's where the drought restriction comes from, because we know we have to take this much Edwards Aquifer anyway. So when you consider that and consider what you want in those drought restrictions, you know, just, just know that it doesn't necessarily mean, whether you trigger off J seventeen or any other triggers, it doesn't necessarily mean we're using less Edwards water. Want to make sure everybody understood that point, because it is a big concern for the citizens. As big a concern as your water utility, right? So we appreciate that it's a precious commodity. You know, we're very mindful of it. We'll never draw more than, than what we're allotted for. We track that, like I said, daily, weekly, monthly. We trend it out for the end of the year. We have major outage concerns, so we pad our margin in there, make sure if we have a major upset in the plant, major line breaks, that we're not going to be in a position where we're ever over our limit. So we do watch it closely. But again, it's up to you guys how you want to trigger that. We recommend that you consider a capacity trigger because of all the planning we've done and all the additional water supplies that we have available to us. But we'll certainly, you know, we can change that up at your discretion as to whether or not you want to go to some, some other trigger, whether it's J seventeen combination or whatever. But I would remind you also, we have a companion resolution for approving the drought contingency plan that we do need to submit to the state. So if we make changes to the ordinance tonight in second reading, we'll ask you to make that amendment then for our contingency, you know, drought contingency plan in, so we can get that prepared and sent to the state as well. And again, if you have any questions about any of that or mechanical keystrokes and operation questions, Mr. Kite's here as well.
I do. And listening to Ms. Parker earlier, here's, here's my question. Would it be possible with this ordinance for the Edwards Aquifer to be in three or four and we're still in one? Because we've got water from other sources.
That is possible. That is possible.
Okay. That, that concerns me. I don't know how many folks are still on Edwards water. So I'll go back to that, but I'm going to ask a couple of questions first. And that is, can we make sure that whenever we do a press release or if we ever do the yard signs, that this will say with the drought stage is the San Marcos drought stage? I, I would feel really good that if we're in drought stage, that we include what the Edwards drought stage is. I know that they won't necessarily be the same, because they've got a four and a five and we don't. But include that in any press releases or anything that we do, just so that people don't see drought stage. Now, we've got three. They need to look at the EAA one, and that way there's no confusion. And maybe there was before, I don't know. But let's not have any in the future, is what, what I'm looking at.
We can address that, ma'am.
Okay. And also, if Edwards Aquifer goes into two to five and we're not, that we can still do a press release for those people who are using Edwards water to understand, and we can make the distinction between the two. And I, I know that, I know that can be done, but I'm asking if we would do that, because there will be people who need to know. And again, the distinction between the two is going to be important, so that we let people know. I, I'm concerned, I think Ms. Parker said, use the most restrictive to trigger a stage. I don't know if we need to do that or not, but I certainly wouldn't want us to be, yeah, just, you know, use all the water you want, but Edwards is over in stage three. So how, how do we address that? First of all, let me see if council members are in agreement with me that that concerns you also?
I have the same concern.
Okay. Others?
It, it does concern me. So what we're saying here is, on the signs from the city of San Marcos, it'll say that San Marcos is in stage three, but you also want to list down what the Edwards Aquifer restrictions are?
Yeah, we can't just say three, because if you're an Edwards Aquifer user, the three is going to be...
Just as somebody who, a regular citizen who isn't as, doesn't read up on the details of what the water restrictions are, and we just see one, two, or three, isn't that going to get a little confusing when somebody says, well, the city of San Marcos says this, but Edwards Aquifer is requesting this?
Well, we don't do signs at this point. I think it'd be easier to explain in a press release, because we do that, and maybe sometimes a public notice. We don't, we don't do the yard signs, do we?
We started putting up yard signs at key locations last year, just to see, you know, if they were effective and, and what the response was. And, and we can certainly find a way to tailor that in. Just as a reminder, though, that even our Edwards-only customers, all of that water use is blended in. It's the city market, city of San Marcos as a whole is what we report back to, to the authorities. So just, you know, with that in mind.
That's true. But there are a lot of people not in the city that drive through the city to come to the library, et cetera, that are, they have their own well. I'm one of them. So I think that, I, I think letting them know both of those, I don't know how much people know about all of this, but I would hope that if they know what drought restrictions mean, or we, we would provide something on the sign that they could look it up.
And, and so what we agreed to dur, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, please, please.
Now, what we agreed to during the workshop a couple, three, four weeks ago, was that, you know, that we would have a new ad campaign to emphasize, you know, so, you know, just with turnover in the city and, and just, you know, general lack of knowledge, it's probably, it's probably overdue for us to have a pretty heavy campaign on educating. And then particularly if you change to three stages instead of the five, even the folks that were dialed in on that need to be reeducated on that. So either way, we'll, we'll have a, a pretty significant campaign on that to get everybody up to speed in, in May, so.
I just want it to be as simple as possible, that somebody's not confused by this standard compared to that standard, especially if you're just your everyday citizen who's trying to water your yard. Just want to make it simple, please.
I have a question, ma'am.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Scott.
Does this affect any of the water supply that we've already acquired fifty years for the future and the sale of water? I mean, if we take and we're monitoring the well at seventeen and we start selling the stuff we sell as a profit, which we need to reduce, doesn't that throw a big hamper on what we tried to do to begin with?
No, because it, yes, and I appreciate the question, but what we do is, we take any Edwards Aquifer rights that we assign. Like last year, we assigned some to the city of Kyle. They've come back and asked, you know, if we could do that again this year. And what we do to make sure that, that we are always in compliance and that we're dialing in and optimizing and, and running the system well, we take that number off the top right off the bat and say, that water's gone. And then we base our reductions on what's remaining. So we're always aware of not just what our allotted water was originally, but what the change in it, that delta is for having temporarily sold some of those rights off. So we do track that. That's in our count. We, we know what that is and, and we plan around that.
I guess my question is, does it affect if we rely on that solely as the indicator of a drought restriction, does that affect sales in the other side?
And it wouldn't in the count because of how we take it off the top. So we take that, that cream off and we work just in what's left. So it would, it would have the same effect. What we do is we actually transfer that responsibility to whoever we assign the rights. So we have a five-year-old agreement now with County Line, and we sell six hundred and thirty acre feet of Edwards water. When we do that, it's their responsibility then to manage their usage based on those restrictions. So whatever were left is still the same amount. And we still account for that.
And I, I hope that somebody can, on our website, so whether you're doing the little Ask the Salamander or you're doing the search at the top, will get us to a good place with the drought restriction and get to this first, because it's not happening now.
We'll make that happen.
Thank you. I still have concerns, but I'm willing to let this work for a while and see where we go. Anyone else got anything? Are two council members online? Nope? All right. Then we will vote on item seven. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Sorry, I skipped. Mr. Gleason? Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Was that a yes or no?
That was an aye, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gleason. Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
And Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Okay. All right. The motion passed. That concludes item seven.
Thank you all.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So we've got five and six on our consent agenda. And council, I'm going to tell you that the, a lot of the information is going to be in this conditional use permit. So I'm going to go to item seven, I'm sorry, item fifteen, next. Then we'll do five and six. Ms. Cordova.
Consider approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash fifty-three, or approving a request for a conditional use permit to allow the purpose-built student housing development generally located on the south side of Lindsay Street between North Convention Street and North Street and southwest of the intersection between Lindsay Street and North Street, authorizing city step to issue a conditional use permit consistent with this resolution and declaring an effective date.
Okay. I'm looking for a motion to get this on the table.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr., was that Mr. Gleason?
I said, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Council, do y'all have anything to start with?
Mayor, I do. The, the concerns over the current residents, especially the ones that are families or seniors over the age of sixty. I'm, I'm looking at the, like, recommendations and the stuff that was in the packet, page eight twenty-nine. I didn't see that. I know I heard the developer mention the willingness due to that, but I really want to, after hearing, personally hearing from some of the residents that, that live there, I want to make sure that we can ensure that somewhere in, in writing.
So if I may, I realized, and thank you, Mayor Houston, for pointing this out, but there was actually, the list of conditions on page eight twenty-nine is not the final list of conditions for consideration by city council. So if you could go to either page eight fifty or, eight fifty's the table and eight thirty-six is the presentation, those are the two that we would be considering this evening.
Yeah. Eight fifty's good, because it's got what happened with APNC and what we did previously. So that was a good chart. Thank you for making that one.
Yes, ma'am.
Sometimes we just do that to help ourselves get clarity, right? Okay.
And for our citizens watching, that's page eight fifty out of one thousand three hundred sixteen pages in this packet.
Okay. So was your concern the six months to one year, or was it that they're being displaced at all?
Well, I, I heard the, they mentioned about willing to make that to a year.
Right. I've got it, I've got it marked for an amendment.
I, I just, I just want to see it with my eye. So when I, you know, when I, I tell people that are currently live there and look in their eyes and tell them like, no, we put it in writing, you'll be given an option to live at the, the new apartment.
What's, it's item seven, and I'm going to make a motion to amend to change it from six to twelve, because I believe Mr., Mr. Kenyon, I believe he said yes, that that would be okay. And now, this was up to five families. I know that kind of was discussed, that's another item. But the other one, I think what you're talking about is where are they going to go for that, however long it takes, to build those apartments? Because it's gonna, it's gonna take a while. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a big project.
I'll second you.
I, I have, I don't have a motion just yet. I'm trying to see where we need to go. Is that something extra that you're concerned about?
Well, I want to include, because like the families and senior residents over the age of sixty. And that, item seven.
My concern, me, is the number of people that apparently don't know that things are about to change. So you're saying families and seniors over sixty?
Yeah.
If anyone in the family is over sixty, or, or, let's say there's a couple?
Or if it's a one-bedroom and has a...
If anybody's over sixty.
Yeah.
And then families.
Yeah.
Okay. I can use some help on that with Mr. Gary.
Actually, can I piggyback on that? Why do we have to restrict it to sixty? Why can't we just make it for anybody whose residence there now to be able to have that same options? Okay? I just wanted to see just...
Really, where I was wanting to, I don't know how many apartments are rented. I don't know how many people this would affect. I don't know if the developer has other apartments. I think, I think in the past, when somebody built a new one and it wasn't ready on time, I don't know if the developer has other apartments. I think, I think in the past, when somebody built a new one and it wasn't ready on time, if they had other units that they would put them, if they had another apartment complex, that they would put them up in any vacant spaces. But I don't know if that's the case here. We may need Mr. Kenyon.
And Mayor, um, I was given information that there are about 40 leases on the properties at this time.
All together?
If you want to elaborate with Mr. Kenyon, I'm happy to give him the podium.
That was a question I was going to ask. Thank you.
But just to circle back on this point, you know, I've been made aware of some stuff recently and have talked to some of the residents there personally. And I want to make sure that we're taking care of these existing residents while they're going through this transition.
May I ask Mr. Kenyon a question?
Good evening. Matthew Kenyon, 1200 Barton Creek Boulevard, Austin, Texas, 78735.
And I guess since we're talking about conditions, I can go ahead and ask them, if, if I start saying anything illegal, Mr. Gary, you should stop me. So, and I'm just going to be real clear. Do you have other places that you, other apartment complexes that you control, own, manage, whatever, um, where those that wish to go, um, could go? I understand. I think there was one young lady who spoke online. I think she's got a year left in school. So, you know, after that, I don't know what, you know, her plans are. So there may not be 40 when, when we get to it, but.
Right. So.
What are, what are your thoughts on what can be done for these folks?
Personally, I, I do not own other properties. I do in Austin. I'm sure, I'm sure that's, they don't want to move up to Austin. But, um, in San Marcos, I don't. And I, I feel like we're confusing two issues here. One is that, uh, on number seven, I told them that I would give them not six months, but 12 months to find somewhere to live. Right? And as far as, um, where they're going to live, uh, I'm not sure. I haven't made any promises on like, you know, I guess there's other apartments and they have 12 months to find another apartment. So.
Yeah, the issue there was the affordability factor that, um. Ms. Reyes or Mr. Pata, can y'all turn the lights up just a little bit? I know we need them down for the present. Thank you. Can y'all still see this screen up here? Okay? All right. Uh, it's the affordability factor. Apparently you're running some, some pretty good places as far as affordability is concerned. I realize there may be other issues with the age of the buildings, but, but there, there are people who are fans. It was the affordability issue as to whether they can find something as affordable as what they have now.
You know, could, could I take a question? Just a second. I have, uh, Jason Sparks has worked with me as a broker for, for many years and he's helping me on this project. And I am not a, someone that places people into apartments that are not mine. So I don't know the answer to that, but I think Jason probably may have a better insight as to, you know, I think that we charge $850 a month for our apartments across the street from the school. I have no idea if there's other apartments that are, are that price in San Marcos or, um, I doubt there are that close to the school.
And, and herein lies the problem.
You, you, um, and well, I'm not saying there's not. Don't get me wrong. I'm not saying there's not. I'm saying I'm not the expert. So if you could, like, could I ask Jason here if there, if there are other places and if we had 12 months, could we find those places? Could I commit to finding those places?
My name's Jason Sparks, 1504 Ocarina Springs. To answer your question, probably not. There, there are availability units, um, around campus. Our other issue is the single-family ordinance that doesn't allow on three people to live in certain areas close to campus. Okay? So, right, we have single families. So, so we, there's not as many multifamily homes that would allow three different people with last names of students, right, in a conventional area?
Yeah, that only applies to single-family zoning.
Okay. So there is a lot of single-family zoning around campus. This walkability that would be around that price range is what I'm saying. So you can get some for 850, $900, but they're going to be, um, they're going to be duplexes, one-bedroom apartments, um, triplexes, quadplexes, apartment complexes. I mean, Lindsay Oaks and the Elms are probably two of the oldest apartment complexes in all of San Marcos. So the rent rates, they're, they've been here for a long time.
So have I.
Well, they've been here for a long time for, for walkability apartments. So the prices they have are very compatible, comparable to, they're, they're cheap. But there are for 12 months, for sure, there are availability, um, won't be maybe as close. But there is in 12 months, you can definitely find 850, 825, 925, 900 bucks. But there, but to answer your question, there, y'all know this too. There's not tons of affordable housing. Even affordable housing, I can go get you a conventional lease at an apartment complex that's cheaper than the income restricted here in town. And that's a fact.
People might start calling you.
Yeah. So.
Mayor, just to get back to that number seven, like what I would be looking to make an amendment is to make it to 12 months, increase it to 10 families and also add in their seniors over the age of 60.
So how does that relate to the 10 and the seniors?
Commissioner Prather, would you mind repeating that? Just, I was.
Uh, make it 12 months up to 10 families, uh, up to 10 families and/or, uh, seniors over the age of 60.
I don't know how you implement that. What if there's?
Well, I mean, with every, being that.
Yeah, there's, there's other reasons. But if that, but if that's what your motion is, I'm just not sure how you implement 10 and over 60.
Well, it's already five and families. I just, in six months, I just thought we would enhance, enhance this.
How do you, how, how do you go with that if you've got?
One of the speakers mentioned that they ran into 10 families and then also a, a senior. That's why I was like, let's just expand that, you know, to 10 families, a senior.
So 10 under 60 plus everyone over 60? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah, uh, everyone over 60 plus 10 families.
Okay.
If I may, um, I think Mr. Kenyon was wondering if we could take those separately because I think he'd like to speak to the 10 families. If we could take the 12 months, I think he's agreed to that. I'm just kind of relaying what's happening here behind me.
I, I, I usually like to do things separately and it's often helpful. Um, so would, would you mind if we split those up?
Sure.
Okay. So, uh, what we have is a motion by Mr. Prather to change the timeframe from six to 12 months. And we're going to deal with that one first. Uh, Mr. Gleason, you still have a second on that one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on that one and discussion on that one in particular. Ms. Garza, your hand is up. Is that for this one or something else that we're talking about? Okay, she took her hand down. We'll, we'll, we'll get back to her. So this one is to change it from six months to 12. Ms. Cordova, which the developer has agreed to, just want to put that in there. Ms. Cordova, let's vote on this one. And if we could go in our regular order, it would be really good. Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Okay. Uh, back to your next one.
Or the, and up to 10 families or seniors above the age of 60.
If you say or, you're only going to get 10 families unless there's more that are seniors. If you say 10 families and everyone over 60, I think that's where you're going, but there's a big difference in the Boolean algebra on here.
And up to 10 families and anyone over 60.
How many folks are there total, like current tenants, tenants of the existing residential structures? How many?
Ms. Hernandez said there were 40 leases. I don't know how many people that is.
And there was, there was some signed as early as three months ago, as, as recently as three months ago.
I, Mr. Kenyon, Ms. Garza's asking, uh, regarding what, uh, one of the speakers earlier said that they had signed a new lease, I believe, three months ago. Could that be accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, well, how long are the leases?
12 months.
12 months, okay. Uh, anything else on that, Ms. Garza?
No.
Okay. So we have a motion for 10 families and anyone over 60. And the number of units that is is unknown, but that could be known at some time in the near future because we're talking about people who live there now, not somebody that's going to move in in August. That doesn't count. So existing. I'm sorry, who, who made the, uh, second on that? Did you, Mr. Scott, did you second that?
No, I didn't hear anybody make one yet.
Okay.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt? I'm, I'm not sure what I'm even agreeing to here.
Hang on a sec. Let me see if I get a second because if I don't, it won't matter. I have Mr. Gleason down. That's a second.
Yeah, I had seconded the original part of it. I'll second it for the sake of discussion. I want to hear what Mr. Kenyon has to say about it.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Now.
Okay. So what I understand that I just agreed to was that I would give all residents living in my properties 12 months or more notice to vacate.
Right. You, you agreed to that. And so we just passed it to put in the conditions. So it's formal now.
Okay, done.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, now we're on the one that says 10 families and anyone over, uh, 60. And, and I'm going to say in the existing, not somebody who signs a lease in August, but people who are there now while these plans are being made. That, that's who it is. You're good with that?
So.
Okay.
So any families that live there now or anyone that's over 60 would have the. Up to 10 families.
You agreed to five and like, let's, let's double that.
So you say up to 10 families.
And then I, I ran into some seniors that live there in the one-bedroom, like, and I'm like, okay, you know, you're right.
So 10 families plus anyone over 60. And so they, they realize though that they'll have to move out. And then if these same families want to move back in.
Right.
Then I have to do it at a.
At a comparable.
At a comparable rate to what the Elms was.
That, that's not changing, which is already in these conditions that we understood that you had agreed to. We're just increasing the number is what we're looking at doing.
I understand that. And so I, I guess what I'm asking is that, and I'm, and I'm used to doing this, you know, and I do this in Las Vegas. I do it in Los Angeles. I do it in Austin and, uh, I get it. What, what's missing out of this is that, uh, normally there's a time limit on that, right? So if someone, if someone 21 years old moves in over here, moves out and then moves back in, do I carry them for the rest of their lives? If they live to be 80, do I carry them for the next 60 years?
Well, if they renew their lease, what you're wanting to know is the really, the lease at what amount, correct?
Usually, I mean, always there's a number of years, like.
Up to seven years?
Yeah, seven years. 10 years or whatever it is. I, um.
Well, if they got to market rate, would you care how long they're there?
Of course not at market rate, but I'm not.
So it's the rate that we're talking about, really not the number of years and the number of years at what rate?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Garza wants to say something. Let's, let's hear her.
Oh, I just, I just had a question. So you're gonna, we're saying we're gonna offer them a spot, dismount people, 10 families, whatever. Whenever it's developed and like up and running, how, and that's in how many years?
Probably like two.
Well, what, what the, with the document that we have before us, that is my understanding that you had agreed to actually doesn't have that number either. So it just says we'll be offered a comparable rent within the new development. It doesn't say how long. So you're asking about that also, which is not.
Which is.
Which is not what we're talking about right now, but I guess we can, it kind of all relates.
Right. And I'm.
Right. Well, I know specifically, I'm wondering like, so when hypothetically would, um, the, like, would they be able to move in? Like, it's, it's going to take years for this to be up and running, right? Like, how many years was said earlier?
Um, let's say three years.
From today?
Yeah.
Okay.
I get what we're trying to do. I get what we're trying to do. I feel like it's just wholly performative that we're putting all the onus on this developer to help solve a much more systemic, complicated, uh, issue of affordable housing. I appreciate, I appreciate the developer's willingness to engage in this conversation, but I just feel that that has to be named. Like, there's, there's like historical, like neglect from leaders to have like these more intense conversations. And I just, I feel like, um, this is weird. This is a weird conversation to have, is all I'm saying. Um.
I mean, in all honesty, I'm just keep making concessions there. Um, but in all honesty, I've, I've, I'm used to getting, to giving some affordable housing and I get it. I mean, I've been in affordable housing myself, honestly. And, uh, and I would carry, and I would raise that number to 10, you know, and I would say that, um, that I would keep them there for seven years, you know, that up to seven years. And, uh, I, I can't carry people for, if they're 20 and they live to be 90, I can't carry them for 70 years.
So when you're saying you can't carry them, you're talking about at that rate, correct?
At that rate. So if they were to move to market rate, of course, I could say as long as they would like to.
Wow, to have.
Okay, comparable rent. I'll make a note on that because we don't have an amendment for that. You're saying for seven, up to?
Up to seven years, yes.
All right. Um.
I'm satisfied. I think that's.
Here's the deal.
So, so that would, that would be a separate amendment after the.
Yeah, but we'll make, we'll, we'll talk about that. But here's what I want to say. And, and this was, this has been discussed and has been asked, is that sometimes in some cities, in return for density, the developer is asked to have X number of units at an affordable rate. That's often the trade-off to get the density.
Correct.
So those of you that voted for seven without asking for anything in return at that point in time, missed a bet there.
Noted.
But that's just a lot of, uh, discount.
Yes, I wanted to maybe offer some clarity as we have the, the markup occurring on the screen. And maybe this is for, well, it's going to be for this one and the next one. But the 10 families and any person over the age of 60 living at the Elms or Lindsay Street apartments as of the effective date of the conditional use permit. Because I heard someone say if they're moving in August, they, they're not currently living there today. So I think it would be beneficial.
I was talking about somebody moving in in August, not moving away.
I, I think we should take out currently and after the apartment complexes. Um, how did I have that in my head?
As of the date of the approval of this document.
After, as of the effective date of this conditional use permit.
When would that be?
I'm sorry?
When would that be?
Today.
If approved today, today is the effective date. So Hayden, that's removing currently as well.
Yeah, that's just, that, that's just to make sure that it's of the people who are living there now, not somebody that, you, you could have 10 people live out, move out in August because they graduated to go on their, you know, whatever. And people coming in, we, I don't think that those folks should, um, be getting the same. I hate to say this, but this is for the people you have now. I hate that we're losing this affordable housing. I truly do. But it is what it is.
And Hayden, if you could change document to permit, that would be perfect.
Another question, ma'am.
Yeah, I said document. She's right. It should be permit. Mr. Scott, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Prather if he's good with this, as we'll just call this all of his amendment.
I'm definitely not good with the seven years. I think you're running into some issues with getting loans and being able to pay them back at a certain time. I think that all the conditions you keep laying out and keep giving away, I don't think it made that much of a difference to be hon, to be honest with you, except maybe they get, you know, 12 months to get out. There is no more affordable housing in San Marcos. That's the fact. Okay. If these people rent there for another three years, that's a lot of money off your intake to be able to get it back. So seven years to me is ridiculous.
And, and I think we can deal with that if we get the next motion on the duration of that comparable rent.
Yeah, the seven years isn't in here yet.
So that was my point. Thank you.
Wait, if you're going to speak, please come to the microphone.
Did you have a question for Mr. Kenyon?
We may want to have that discussion after that motion to amend on that point.
Okay. So the seven years is not part of this right now. Uh, Mr. Prather, are you good with adding this as of the effective date of this permit?
No, I don't like that. Um.
It's to cover the people who live there now, not people who may move in in the future.
Okay. Um.
You're not okay with that?
The end of the year or is there any more leases that are up or, or like, or when their lease would be up?
I will say that for the purposes of staff being able to attempt to enforce this, having a date certain is much more helpful than having to try to track when individual leases expire. That could put us in a little bit of a bind trying to compute and figure that all out.
Can we make it 55 or 57?
What are you talking about?
The age.
You want to drop the age down?
Yeah, 57 or 55.
Well, pick, pick, pick a number.
57.
57?
57.
Okay. We can, we can go with 57. We can, we can go with 57. Okay, and this is effective date. I do not have enough paper in front of me.
And is there, I guess who?
Okay.
Was there actually a motion already that was seconded yet?
Yes, yes. He made a motion, and I'm trying to get clarity on what the motion is.
Whoever seconded that should concur, and.
I'm getting ready to ask that, but I'm trying to make sure I know what the motion is first, and then I'll, you're right, I need to get the second, the person who did the second. So are you okay with what's up here now, including the as of the effective date of this permit?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gleason, are you good with that additional clarification? Is your second still good?
I'm fine with the effective date.
Okay, so that's what we're voting on at this point in time. That's our second motion to amend by Mr. Prather, seconded by Mr. Gleason. 10 families plus anyone over 60 as of the effective date of this permit, and I see Mr. Kenyon nodding yes, so.
I have the age of 57 as a clarification for Mr. Prather.
I'm sorry, you're right. You're right, 57.
I, I, I've never seen willingness to accommodate current residents, and there's been so many concessions with this development, I have, you really have set the bar, and thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Scott?
For the developer.
And does it have to do with this item?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Do you have 10 families? Are there actually 10 families in your current residence?
Did you say they're all studios?
I believe studios of one bedrooms.
Okay.
Don't manage the properties myself, but when I say families, I guess what I'm talking about is there's, there's single mothers with children.
Yeah.
Which I consider families.
Okay.
So.
We actually have 10, okay. That's the swap.
Okay. Ms. Cardova will vote on this one.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Okay, next amendment. Okay, we'll go with one of mine, and that is has to do with item 10, and I believe that we have an amendment ready to go. One was provided to me by, and y'all would have seen it on the message board, and this is item 10. For those of you watching at home who may not have this up, the developer shall not sell the property to a non-taxpaying entity for seven years from the effective date of the conditional use permit. We're still talking about this contention, conditional use permit. I'm not sure how enforceable that is for just, you know, number 10 and conditional use permit. And so from the legal department, I'm going to make a motion to amend that says I move that the condition prohibiting sale to a tax-exempt entity for seven years from the day of this approval be memorialized in a restrictive covenant approved by the city attorney that is recorded in the official public records of Hayes County. Mr. Gary, does this need to be part of 10, or is this a new item? I think it needs to be part of.
Yeah, I'm just checking it. Yes, 10 would be the appropriate location for that.
Okay, so that's, that's my motion. I'm seeking a second. This is not changing what Mr. Kenyon has already agreed to. This is just putting a, a little bit more teeth in it.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll, since Mr. Gonzalez brought that up to begin with, I'll give him the second. Are there any questions, council members online? Any questions here?
I have an amendment to add after that.
Okay. Ms. Cardova, let's vote. We can still rotate the vote, just keep them in our usual order will be helpful as I'm marking down, and for you too. Okay.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
And Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather? Thank you. Motion passed, seven to zero.
Okay, Ms. Scott, you said you had a motion?
And my motion is to remove the non-taxpaying entity, and just say to sell the property for seven years. So it includes everybody, can't sell to anybody.
I mean, yeah, if someone else wanted to buy.
What's the difference?
The part, well, the point was taking it off the tax roll.
Yeah.
Right, so if he doesn't sell it, it can't take off the tax roll.
Well, he could sell it to like another.
Nonprofit.
Another.
Another developer or something like, you know, like, or another.
No, 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 you can't. If you take it out, the non-taxable has nothing to do with what I'm talking about. Taking that off, basically, you can't sell the property to anyone.
I, I know, but that's like, you know, free market is like, well.
Okay, but, well, hold on. Let, let Mr. Scott make his motion, formal, and then we'll see if there's a second, and then we'll have our discussion.
Yeah, that was, that was my motion, to basically take that off so it applies just to seven years straight across.
Okay, we now, you know, when we do motions, we have to have remove words, insert words, et cetera, so tell me exactly what you want.
I don't have to, you have the secretary do it or you.
No, I need you to do it, unless the attorney needs to do it for us.
No, ma'am.
So the motion would be.
That's not necessary, Mr. Scott.
Well, don't, don't challenge me.
All right. The motion I guess would be, I think as I'm reading it, to take out, on item number 10, take out the words to a non-taxpaying entity. Delete those words, so it read, the developer shall not sell the property for seven years from the effective date of the conditional use permit.
Correct.
That would be the motion, and then there, we'd need, we need a second if that's gonna.
That's a motion for Mr. Scott, looking to see if there's a second, and to see if anybody, those of you online.
We shouldn't have discussion unless there's a second, so, you know.
I'll second it just to discuss it. I really am curious to see what that means to say, you know, what's the difference between the two? I'd like to.
Okay.
Well, the concern about putting a non-taxable entity in there was the fear of the university buying the property and takes off the tax roll. Well, the longer he owns the property and can't sell it, it does the same thing. You know, Jude's argument is, well, he can sell it to somebody else, but we didn't want people to come and just get rights to property and just flip it and sell it, right? That was one of the things that we were, you know, people talked to us about all the time. So one of the ways around that is to take that entity out for seven years before he can sell the property, period. Where I stand is I just don't want to take the habit, I'll be honest. We can work that out.
Mr. Gary, if Mr. Kenyon wanted to sell this after, well, let's say less than seven years, does this go with the property and would be binding on whoever bought it?
Well, after, well, first of all, he can't sell it for seven years under this proposed amendment, so there wouldn't.
I'm talking about right now, without that.
The way it's written now, he cannot sell it even before.
No, I'm not talking about the amendment. I'm talking about as of today.
Okay.
We haven't passed that. If he chooses to sell it after three or four years, is this can't sell to a non-taxpaying entity, does that go with the property and it's binding on the next person, and it's still the seven years from today?
Correct, that's correct. That's correct. As it's written, as it's proposed today, that's.
Well, I thought maybe that's where you were going, was to keep that from happening. Okay, you're saying that this goes with the property?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, okay.
Yeah, that goes with the property, but that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about, can he also, can he also sell it to his friend, Joe? Whatever, even though it's a nonprofit agency, right? He can sell some other.
He can't sell it, he cannot sell it to a tax exempt, non, 501(c)(3) nonprofit.
Right.
He can sell it to a private developer.
Right.
For profit.
That's, that's what I'm talking about, so that's flipping property.
So the only thing, and I don't, again, I'm kind of a little bit on the spot here, so I'm just reacting to this, but.
Well, Ms. Hernandez has something to say, if that would buy you a little time to think through what you want to say.
Well, if I could, I think I should make this comment. I, I'm not sure that, there may be issues with a lender on that type of restriction, but again, I, I don't know. I'm, I'm not in the private market, but a, a bank, of course, may have an issue, but that would be, I guess, something.
So a few considerations that I'd actually, may I?
Ms. Hernandez has something to say, and then we can bring Mr. Kenyon back.
Just a few considerations. One is that as we're talking about this project and the conditional use permit, we are also talking about the property west of North Street, even it's, it has some regulations, even though it won't be student housing. That property is currently owned by two private ownerships, which means that that property will have to sell to Mr. Kenyon in order for the development to go forward. So if you take out the non-taxable entity, I wonder if there may be any issues with them conveying their land to Mr. Kenyon. Another.
But we could make that exception.
Pot, potentially. And then a couple of other considerations. The prior agreement, as I mentioned in my previous presentation, was specifically to a person, and that person passed away. So that agreement that we had with that particular person then expired because of them no longer being with us. So just as we're considering this running with the land versus being to a particular person, keeping that in the back of your head. And then also, if Mr. Kenyon does not submit any permits within three years, this approval would expire, and that's one of the conditions that's included. So I just wanted to add that for considerations.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure what the relevance of the person who got a permit and then they die, I, I'm not sure how that's relevant because we're talking about the land here, correct?
Yes, ma'am, that, that we are essentially giving this, this approval to Mr. Kenyon. He would not be able to sell, or the land would not be able to be conveyed if we make the change to remove the non-taxpaying entity.
Why? Is she a non-taxpaying entity?
Wouldn't be able to sell it to someone else who would be paying taxes.
Right.
And I, I think, the reason being that the effective date is, would be as of tonight, so that would be, but that's what the current motion is right now. I think we need a vote on that and then see if that needs to be addressed.
But Ms. Hernandez brought up an excellent point, is there's two of these properties that he has not yet bought. So would this restrictive covenant apply to after Mr. Kenyon purchases them? Or would it apply to the people who own the properties now, in which case, like you say, he couldn't buy them?
I would think we'd need some sort of clarification.
The way I'm, the way I'm reading condition 10 is it applies to the developer, really means the whole project. So yes, I think Ms. Hernandez is correct, the way I read it, as presently.
It's correct in that with the other two owners, he wouldn't.
Would be restricted.
They would be restricted too, okay. Got it, I'm with you. Okay. Are you, did you want to change anything?
Does that need to be clarified? Or is that on yours?
It's your motion.
I have just a question for the developer. Does this affect you financially as far as loans, banks, all that kind of stuff?
In all honesty, it would kill my project. There's, there's no way that a, there's no way that a bank will allow that restriction on me. If something happened to me and I became financially incapable, and I, and I couldn't sell the property, the bank would then go down. The bank would end up eating all of that, plus I would never get my, my investors on board with restricting them. What I can assure you is that we, and I think what we're talking about here is that I will not sell to anyone that does not pay taxes on this property to the city of San Marcos, and more, way more importantly to me, to the school district, right? And so it, like, if I sell to my friend Joe, then Joe just picks up the taxes, right? And that's the, and that's the way it goes. But if I said that, if I said to my bank, I, I can't sell this for any reason or seven years, it would be a nonstarter for me.
Okay, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, thank you.
Withdrew. You okay with that? All right, so withdraw.
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. Did you have anything else? Okay. I, I don't understand, on item two, the developer agrees to extended demolition delay, and I, and I asked this on the message board, and I guess I wasn't clear because I didn't get a response to what I was really meaning to ask, is why are we limiting him to a year in order to move those houses?
So it's not a limit on the time that he has to move them. He could work with whoever he's working with for two years to get them moved, and that would be fine. What we ended up switching this condition to was something that we actually have some control over, was if they decide we need to demolish these structures for whatever reason, when they submit the application for demolition, the one year starts. So that one year does not start today. It starts when and if they need to demolish those structures. But they can continue for as long as they need with their contacts who would potentially move.
So he's got all the time that he needs, the, the.
To relocate.
Yeah, but, I mean, he's gonna want to relocate them. It's to his advantage, the sooner he operates. I just didn't want to risk having something happen that he's going, I just need another week, you know? So I wanted to give him the opportunity. Okay, so I read that wrong, it's okay. Now we are, and, let's see, we fixed that. Okay, I'm gonna let y'all know where I'm going with this. I've got two issues. One is parking, told y'all that last time. And I've got issues with the four stories, and I said I would, I said I wanted the three. I considered the four, but I'm back to three. Again, I have driven it for probably the 75th time, and I'm looking at the stories, and I, I'm not going to be able to do that. So that's one, but I also want to talk about the parking. Because y'all recall that, and I'm the one that suggested, the land west of North Street go to five, because at some point, we've got to say, this is where our downtown ends, and I like, I like that to be on Lindsay. Y'all went with that. The downside for me on that is that the parking changes. And if you're talking about five, it's one per front door, and for the 5D, it's 1.05 per bedroom. Have I stated that correctly?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so what that means is for every three, three bedroom, he gets a 66% break on the parking. Only has to do one instead of three, okay? That's 66% break. I was hoping that it would kind of wash out with the seven stories on the other with the 0.85, but that's not what's happening. That's why I said I don't want to give him a break on the seven stories, those other two, whatever buildings it's gonna be in, those other two parcels. And I thought that the whole thing would maybe level out to 0.75, and it didn't. It's down to 0.78. We don't know 100% on how many spaces until he knows how many units, but we got the, the part. So what I would like to do is to say it's one space per bedroom east of North Street instead of 0.85, and then that changes to 0.78, and somebody's gonna need to calculate that. So that is my motion, because I didn't go from 5D to five to have fewer parking spaces.
Hey, can you explain to me just one more time the rationale for this, like, why? Like, I'm, I'm just like struggling to understand your hyperfixation on the parking.
I'm trying to get back to where we were, and what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended was the 0.85. I'm not thrilled with the 0.85, but I'm willing to do that. But if we go with what's here, it's going to be a lot less. Now, if you end up putting one and two bedrooms on the west side of North Street and not as many three bedrooms, then that brings that down, because for a two-bedroom, it's a 50%, for one-bedroom, it's one to one. That's pretty close to 1.05. So the other thing is to talk about, you know, we, it's only one and two bedrooms on the west side of North Street. And I'm willing to have that conversation also, because honestly, unless you have three people that want to live in the same place together, I don't know that there's gonna be families with kids, teenagers, where you need the extra bedrooms. I think what you're gonna have is maybe new graduates, you know, maybe some married couples, they might be there long enough to have that first baby, but I just don't think that there's gonna be a lot of families that you need the three-bedroom there. That's just me, I could be wrong. So that's why I've got a motion to basically get back to the 0.85 across the project that we started with, that y'all wrote.
By we, you mean planning and zoning. Or when you say where we, where we, where we were, what do you?
What was given to us to begin with was the 0.85. What was given to us to begin with was the 0.85. And I'm not sure, and y'all seem to be okay with that. But the game changed with the five instead of 5D on the west side. He's getting a huge break on parking there. And I'm not going up, trying to go up from the 0.85, which is what I'd really like to do, but I'm not. Um, but I'm trying to get to the 0.85 across the whole project. And so that's my motion is to-
You also mentioned something about three bedrooms.
Well, it, it, it goes, uh, uh, I'll come back to, to that, but-
But are they interconnected then? Like is that other conversation going to then influence changing this again?
Possibly.
Then should we have the other conversation first or?
Well, it's kind of a chicken and the egg.
I think I better talk about the amount of rooms, then we can talk about parking.
Well, if we know what the rooms are, it's gonna make the parking conversation a little easier.
Yes ma'am.
So we can wait, but that's if, uh, we don't, if the, now the, uh, developer has already agreed to, to drop down to three bedrooms from four. I mean, he can do any mix of one, two, and three, but he's not doing four. If he comes down to ones and twos, then I feel a whole lot better about this, but I may still-
Whoa, when did we get to ones and twos? When did that happen?
Yes ma'am.
What, I'm sorry, say that again please, Ms. Garza.
I'm confused, how did we get to ones and twos? Did that just happen right now?
Well, his, his maximum was three. I don't know what he was going to put in there. He could do ones, twos, and threes. He just couldn't do fours.
Right, but you said if, if we drop down to one, two, does that mean just one, two, or?
That affects the parking.
So, uh, let me weigh in on, I'm a three-bedroom. Like if, if it's a family and they have two kids, each kid's one, want their own bedroom. If they're a family and, and they're working professionals, professors at the university, what, and they have a kid, but they need an office, you know, like, so a, a three-bedroom really is beneficial for families and professional families that have more than one kid or they wanna utilize, they work from home, the office at home.
I understand that, and that's fine. But when you have a three-bedroom, he's getting a two-thirds break on parking. Y'all following me on that? Because on the west side, I'm only talking about the west side for the parking, it's one per front door. Over on the other side with the 5D, he's gotta provide one per bedroom. On the five side, it's one per front door. So if he's got three bedrooms, he's gotten a 66% break on the parking. He's only gotta provide one, not three. If it's a two-bedroom, he's gotta provide one. For two, he's getting a 50%. Am I correct on this?
The math works.
Uh, 66 and two-thirds, well, we'll go with 66, so.
I have a question, ma'am.
Yes.
I mean, he's already given so many other things up, wouldn't it be kinda nice to give him a little bit of a break?
Here's the deal. We started with 0.85 and none of y'all said to reduce that. We left it at 0.85, correct?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Y'all were okay with 0.85. And then y'all went to seven stories. But the 5D has given him a huge break on parking. My point is I think giving him a one would go back to the 85 that y'all were good with to begin with.
Doesn't sound right.
I just think it's important to name that when we say things like, well, y'all were good with this or y'all could have said that. This is a very like complicated situation. None of us are full-time council members. For some of us, we haven't been in office 20,000 years like the rest of y'all. So I feel like, I just wanna name that like, yeah, maybe yesterday I, you know, thought this or that, but let's like, to go back and keep saying, well, y'all were Gucci with this before, I feel like that's just like, like we're, we're, it's, we're rolling with it, you know? So it's like just allow that process to happen.
Mayor, is there any, um, wiggle room with the four stories? You mentioned about going to three stories and I feel like, and I think that maybe, uh, you know, the four to three, how much of a game changer is that? How, i- is this project still viable at three stories? I'm, I'm seeing heads shaking, no.
Can I speak about this for a second?
Yes, please do. I will ask you to come, come and, come address these. And if you want to do the twos, since they're kind of interwoven, that would be fine.
So there's a lot of issues that you're talking about here and there's, this is, I'm, I'm telling you, this seems simple. It's an extremely complicated equation. When you can build on the east side, I have the ability to build four bedrooms, right? Okay, that's what most students want. I'm telling you, we lease more four bedrooms than anything else, right? That's what they want. But for us, we build one kitchen, we build one living room. The cost comes down tremendously. So if I go to the other side and I build all one bedrooms, I have to build kitchens in every single one of those. I have to build living rooms in every single one of those. The price is not 10% higher. It, it's almost, it, it's extremely high. And so, um, I guess the next issue was go to three stories. You and I have talked about that. And I can't make it work. It just financially will, will not work at three stories.
I have a question on that though. This conversation you had, this agreement you made, was this during the, the council about going from four-bedroom to three-bedroom?
There was no agreement.
Yes, we, I agreed to that because, well, because it was part of the, the zoning that the mayor suggested. I agreed to that zoning, which did not allow fours, o- only on the west side, it did not allow four bedrooms. Because we made it multifamily. So you know what, there's not a lot of multifamily, families that use four bedrooms, right? There's one, twos, and threes. And threes are important for, for all the, you know, the, what you mentioned, you know? If you have one child and you need an office, it's important. If you have two children and you can afford it, of course you want them to have their own bedroom. If you have an elderly parent that lives with you and one child, you need three bedrooms. It's important. I mean, I'm not saying that I'm gonna fill the whole thing up with three bedrooms. But, um, the, the difference is, is that, is that the mayor's saying that I'm getting this enormous break on parking, but I'm not. If you read what I, if you read what I wrote in number five, it's 85%, but in no case will I reduce it under 78%, right? So I've made that concession to, even though I could fill this hole, I could take the hole, and we talked about this, I could take the entire, and this is important to me because it's not the last project I'm doing here. I could take the whole west side, I could fill it up with all three bedrooms and I could park it almost nothing, right? I, because I only need one parking space for three bedrooms. I knew that and I told you that. And I said, I don't, I don't want you to, I don't want council to feel like they're getting screwed later when I, if I did this. So I said, I will voluntarily raise it up to 78% as a minimum. So that no matter how I build it, and I think it will still come out way higher than 78%, but at a minimum, it will come out to 78%.
And that's what I want to be 85.
Okay, with a 78%.
I, I know you do, I know you do.
That's what, that's what, that's what I'm looking for. We'll see if I've got three people who agree with me.
Right, can I just say, um-
Okay.
Go ahead.
Can I just say one thing? I feel like, I feel like we just have to be for real. Like, can we just stop wasting everybody's time? Like we keep moving the goalposts, we keep switching things up. And it's not just like little things, it's like da-da-da. So let's just like keep it real, like if it's a no-go, if, if you want three or nothing, like just say that and we can like end this. Like I just, I feel like we just keep dragging our neighbors around, the developer around. And this is just getting embarrassing and awkward. Um, so I just, I wanted to name that. Uh, yeah, he already said what he's willing to do and the concessions and now we're just like going around again.
Okay, let, let me make it clear. I was not looking to make restrictions that he can't do the three. What I said was if he doesn't do the three, which is giving him a huge break on parking, then we could talk differently about what this number's gonna be. If you want to do the three, that's okay, but you're getting a big break on the parking. Matter of fact, if, you're, you're actually getting about $60,000 worth if those parking spaces are $30,000, right? So you're saying it's gonna cost you more to build, but it's gonna save you.
But it's not because I agreed to 78%. Which, which means-
Forget the percents.
The percents matter because if I, if, if, if you go 78%,
And I don't like the 78.
Most three-bedrooms will be parked with two cars, right? Most three-bedrooms will be parked with two cars if you go to 78%. And that, that was the point I was making. I mean, I'm, I'm, you know I've made every concession that I can make and I'm telling you, if you do it this way, these numbers cannot work. And that's why I came up as high as I possibly can to 78%. It's not a big difference between 85%. I agreed to park everything on the east side to 85%. On the west side, I will park, it, I will not have the overall parking on the development be less than 78%. Amanda showed a chart, a chart where all the, where everyone else in town is parked at 70%. You know what? The other developers are all parked at 70%. So I'm way higher than those. Plus, plus on a di, in addition to that, I gave 20 extra parking spaces on top of what I agreed to do that doesn't count on that 85%.
Is, is the, to switch from parking, is the three stories, is that a deal killer as well?
Three stories is, it, it can work.
And Mayor, you mentioned about, you know, incentivizing affordable housing through density, like is that fourth story because we've allowed for former residents to have that same rent rate they're at, at their current place? It was affordable for seven years, you know, could we factor that into our logic of?
I'll think on that. Wish y'all had done the affordable for the seven stories. Okay, so, um, question for you, uh, Mr. Kenyon. And that is, when the documents were given to us with the conditions last time, was the 0.85 in there for the parking?
It, it was in there for the parking before you changed the zoning.
Correct. So when you thought you had to do 105 for every bedroom, you were okay with the 85%, correct?
Yes, because I could do four bedrooms on the other side.
Okay, no? I think you had already agreed to limit to three bedrooms on the west side. Am I wrong on that? Just tell me, if, if I am, that's okay.
You have, in my mind, if, in my mind, yes, because I never could have afforded that.
And, and the document, Ms. Hernandez, in the document with the conditions that were presented to us at our April 2nd meeting, did it say a limit of three bedrooms on the west side and 0.85% on the parking?
Let me pull up that document that we were looking at last time.
Yeah. That's what I'm trying to get back to, is that 0.85 that you, you had asked for, I forget what it was at Planning and Zoning Commission. It was less than the 0.85. Planning and Zoning Commission raised it to 0.85, correct? I believe.
I asked for 0.75.
Right. Okay, 0.75, but it was lower and Planning and Zoning Commission said 0.85. Were you okay with the 0.85? I'm looking to see what the, the conditions were that in my mind, Mr. Kenyon had already agreed to.
Sure, so when we took a little break and went back to write conditions, we had looked at, um, 0.85 spaces per bedroom. And my note says that the applicant agreed to that on the east side of North Street. But we left it that we were going to work together to figure out what the parking condition would look like for this meeting.
What was? We had a list and there were two lists because one was gonna be restrictive covenants, one was a list of conditions on the student housing, correct? And then y'all took both of those and put them into one list, which was great. Not, not complaining about that. I'm just trying to state facts of how we got here. Was the 0.85 in either one of those lists?
0.85 was in the list with the applicant agreeing to the condition on east side of North Street. And I'm looking at the document which I had sent to Mr. Meagle right before we came back to discuss after the break.
Okay, and what was, what was the parking on the west side?
We didn't get to a number on the west side. We were looking at the one per unit.
Because at that point, well, at that point, you didn't have the PSA or the zoning on the west side.
Correct. We were talking about the conditional, well, we had a initial approval and then we got to the conditional use permit. And when you had the change from character district 5D, we had to do some shifting around of, of what we thought was going to be the appropriate condition. And that was one where we had left off and we're going to come back with a new proposal.
But previously, it would have been 0.85. If we, if we had left it at, at 5D, would it have been 0.85?
Yes ma'am, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that. That was on the table last meeting.
So you had agreed to 0.85. I'm trying to get back to 0.85 and get rid of this 0.78.
He just explained to you where he's at and why he's at. So like, we don't have a time machine, we can't go back. The past already happened. I'm just very confused as to like, like why is this conversation so going on?
When the zoning changed, the building became more expensive. No doubt about it.
I'm sorry, say that again?
When the, when you changed the zoning, the building for me became much more expensive to build.
Which zoning to what?
So when you changed the west side zoning to not include the D, it took away my ability to build four bedrooms. Which means now I'm probably building 30, 40, 80 more kitchens.
Didn't you offer the three-bedroom? I don't think we told you to do that. My packet said three-bedroom.
It, it did say three-bedroom, but it said one parking space per unit.
Alright, let me just go ahead and make, make my motion. I've been trying to explain that I'm trying to get back to where we started at the last meeting, so.
But I feel like my, my question I asked a second ago, which was, what was the rationale for the 0.85 from Planning and Zoning? I feel like that's important.
Yes, staff recommended the 0.85 at Planning and Zoning Commission because that was what was approved by city council in that 2017 agreement back when other developments were getting the 30% reduction. This would have been, would have been-
And that was the transit-oriented district that we've since gotten rid of because it never really was a thing.
Correct, it was part of Smart.
So it's like-
Yeah.
Right, so like I'm trying to figure out like, what, what is the, the why? And the why is basically not super strong. It's like, it's a thing, that was a thing back in the day, but then not really. And that's why we recommended this, like, we just, this is all just wild to me.
Okay, my motion is going to be on item five. I guess I'm gonna try to make it simpler. Um, where it says the development shall not provide less than 0.78 parking spaces. Ooh, this says per bedroom for the entire project. Um-
Yes ma'am, so that's actually a layered condition.
Right.
That when we calculate the one per front door and 0.85 per bedroom, when we add those together, if at any point they go below 0.78 across the board per bedroom, they would potentially have to provide those additional spaces as Mr. Kenyon was referencing.
Right, but what I was, where I'm trying to go was the 0.85 across the project per bedroom, okay. That's what my motion will be, is to an item five to strike the 0.78 and insert 0.85. And I'll see if I get a second. If I don't, then-
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. But the point I'm trying to make is I'm trying to get back to what I thought everybody was okay with to be, in the beginning. And we've actually lowered the parking requirement. So, trying to get back to the beginning. Is there any other discussion? Ms. Garza, do you have any other questions?
Oh, because I still don't understand, aside from wanting to go back to the beginning, I don't understand why. Like, just 'cause, like, I don't, the rationale, I mean, I don't know.
I wanna make sure it's fully parked for what's going to be there. You can vote no.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm being honest, ma'am. Like you have a lot more experience and a whole lot more time to deep dive into this. I'm not, I'm not trying to give you a hard time. I genuinely wanna understand, like, where you're coming from. I'm not just ask, and, and, like, asking questions to be shady, I promise. You want it to be fully parked, that's-
I think, I think developments should provide the parking that they're going to need. Um, I don't think that the city should be providing the, the parking. Um, public property, I think they should provide the parking that they need. Um, I, an answer was not provided when I asked for the research that was done on the current apartment, um, complexes about, um, that said, you know, they were only parked at 70 or whatever it is. Uh, was that, were they full? Because I'm not convinced that they're all full. Still got friends that are calling around saying, oh yeah, we have plenty of spaces, apartments. So if they, if they're only 80% full, maybe they have plenty of parking. If they were 100% full, I don't know if they'd have the parking or not. That, that question wasn't answered. So I'm not convinced that even those that say they are really are, I, I, I think they're short.
And they can still charge for their parking, right?
Correct.
Yeah, y'all took, y'all took out that restriction.
So Mayor, the motion is to change 0.78 to 0.85. Mayor, the motion is to change point seven-eight to point eight-five, correct?
Um, yes.
Was there a second, did I miss the second?
Mr. Gonzalez seconded it.
Thank you very much, sorry.
Or I wouldn't still be talking about it, but thanks for checking.
Thank you.
Okay, I think, Ms. Cordova, I think it's just time to vote.
Ms. Garza?
No.
Mayor Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
No.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
No.
Mr. Scott?
No.
The motion failed, four to three.
All right. Um, y'all noticed that we've got items five and six to go. Uh, Mr. Gary, does five still need a super majority? And item six, which we probably ought to split into west of Lindsay, I'm sorry, west of North Street and east of North Street, because super majority is needed for the west side and not the east side, am I correct on that?
Correct, ma'am, the, the super majority requirement that was required for any decision at first reading carries over to second reading as well. So you're correct.
Thank you.
And I did want to touch base, because I may have missed something here, not to belabor the, the conditions chart, but on item seven of the chart, there was some discussion about, I thought there was a commissioner wanting to set a duration for the comparable rent, or maybe it's the intention to leave it perpetual, but as it's written now, there's no duration.
Right.
And I don't have a preference, I'm just asking if that was, that.
You're right, we need to get back to that.
And, and if, if there's no requirement that we do that, I'm just saying, if you had intended, we had not addressed that.
You're absolutely right, and thank you.
Is it legally now perpetual and continues on?
Seven years?
Just, just seven years?
Right, right now, there isn't a limit.
There is no limit presently.
But he, he has stated seven years.
Asked for seven.
Okay, he did ask for seven, okay, let's go back to that.
Is that correct, Mr. Kenyon, let's. Uh, up to seven years at comparable rent? Okay. Matttingly?
Oh, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear, um, there, there was a lot of talking, but so, what we're talking about right now is the limit on the rent reduction, the comparable rent, right? And that he would agree to have that for seven years, and then after seven years, it could go to market rate or whatever.
Okay, then.
It is still from effective date, correct, so effective date of the CD.
Okay. So we don't have a motion. So I'm waiting on a motion on this one, and as you make the motion, we will, um, whoever's driving the screen share will put that in there, so we know exactly what we're voting on. Is there a suggested, oh, it looks like it's on it.
So moved.
Make a motion for seven, for three years, not seven.
Wait a minute. FOR, no less than seven years?
Yeah, say less than three years.
We need a F O R, in front of no less, I think.
So I'm hearing two motions, but I think I heard Councilmember Prather first made the seven-year one, but, um, there, neither one has a second, so I guess we need to dispose of the first motion first, and then that one fails.
Let me go with.
Seven years.
Seven years, okay, let me see if there is, because I heard that one first. So let me see if there is a second to.
I will second that.
Okay, so. Mr. Mendoza, okay, so, um.
The thought of seven years, it lines up with the seven years of restrictions on selling and that kind of stuff, so just, seven years.
Okay.
And if I might, um, I would actually prefer the for no less than seven years be after within the new development, I feel like it reads a little strange from an enforcement perspective.
Well, we haven't defined comparable either, comparable to what? So, that's.
Comparable rent within the new development, so it'd have to be by bedrooms. The, the way I've interpreted right now is if it's a two-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom to one-bedroom, but again.
But comparable rent, comparable to their current rent? Comparable to market rate that's going to be charged to the others, comparable to what?
Comparable to their current rent.
I think that's what we're all thinking, but that's not what it says. So, Mr. Gary, what do we need to do to, are you okay with adding that in?
No time like the present for, for, uh, the avoidance of all doubt, what the council's intentions are with that condition.
And I might also ask.
Presume, because I'll, I'll need you all to tell me that.
I might also ask if we want to take the seven years as a separate vote, since we know the applicant has agreed to that, and then maybe.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah, that's where I'm going.
Thank you.
Sometimes it's kind of good to know where you're going while you're on this one, but as a formal action, yes, you know I like to do amendments segmented. Okay. Uh, let's see, Mr. Mendoza, uh, seconded that one. If there's no more discussion, we will vote on, uh, the comparable rent for, I'm sorry, yes, comparable rent. Uh, that last part is not what we're doing right now, but don't cut that text, just copy it, okay? This is what we're voting on now, is for no less than seven years. Ms. Cordova?
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather? Mr. Scott? And Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero.
No, Mr. Scott said no.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Mr. Scott, I didn't get that.
Get a little closer to your microphone, will be helpful. Okay, so now I will make the motion to add a, well, I'm still not sure this is great, but insert to their current rent after a comparable, comparable rent. Uh, and that's my motion, and we're still on item seven. If anybody wants to second it now, be a good time.
Second.
Thank you. Second. Any questions on that one? I believe that's what Mr. Kenyon had agreed to in the beginning, thank you, sir, for that confirmation.
Well, in all fairness, will it be considered the, um, the fluctuation, the fluctuation in rental at that time? So let's say around the city, rent has been increased by two percent, will that be?
It would be what he, it, it would be what he would be doing at his apartment complex. It's comparable to their current rent where they are now, not surveyed across the universe.
Okay, I just want to ensure that it's, it's still considered fair, I mean, if the rent does go up, I mean, it's still, I mean, to keep somebody at eight hundred and fifty dollars.
If where, if where they are, if, if they're a hundred dollars now.
Next year is a hundred fifty.
And next year, I was going to say a hundred and five, but whatever the, 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 well, you can say the past history has been, that, yes, you, yes, Mr. Kenyon says that's fair.
Okay, that, that's fair, I, I just want to make sure that that's.
Mr. Gary, do we need to put that in here?
You're talking about here, I think, uh, would he be allowed to have customary increases uh, per year, similar to what was in the current rent structure?
What you just said.
Including customary increases. Is that what I heard?
Of the history of the apartments that he has. So if he goes up, you know, at five dollars a year, then he can still go, and if that's times eight, it's times whatever. But it would be at your history, which you'll need to provide to Ms. Hernandez, so that she can.
Inequal across the board.
There's no way to send that to you right now.
And I will include that in my motion, if Mr. Prather is okay, it's a second, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I sent to Mr. Meagle what I wrote down, so he should have that.
Including customary increases.
Based on the history of these complexes.
Based on the history of these complexes, thank you, that's where I was trying to go, I appreciate it. Sometimes it takes a village. Okay, any questions on this one? Let's vote, Ms. Cordova.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Ms. Garza? No? The motion, motion passes five to two no.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't aye, I don't know if you thought that I was aye.
All right, motion passes six to one.
Okay. I normally don't like to have a break in the middle of a topic before we, before we vote. But I'm going to say let's do that this time, because it's been close to our ninety minutes, and this next one may, may go longer, may not, but we're going to be here for a while. You've got a babysitting thing at ten o'clock.
That would work out perfect, I'll zoom in from there.
Oh, you're going to go now?
No, I'll go, I'll go during this break and go home and zoom in.
That's why I said you're going to go now and zoom in, okay.
Mayor, did we get a vote on the main motion to approve?
No, that's what I just said, normally I don't like to have a break and leave that hanging, but.
I feel like I'm, I'm not keeping up here, so thank you for the clarification.
We're, we're not through on these, so we're still on item fifteen.
Okay.
And we're to kind of come back at nine forty.
That's the main motion, fifteen, right?
Yes. Nope, we're on item fifteen. Our meeting at seven forty-eight. Um, I will ask if there are, I'm looking for Ms. Garza to get back on. I do have four, we're having a legal meeting. Uh, two of our members, um, had to leave and go home, but they are joining us by Zoom. Mr. Scott will join us shortly. And, um, Mr. Prather is, is with us. Need Ms. Garza to turn her camera back on, and, and Mr. Gleason's with us, okay. So we're good. We are still on item fifteen. We are on the conditions for the, um, related to the student housing conditional use permit. Just as a reminder, uh, the development, Ms. Hernandez, when we say the development, that's what we were calling the project before, correct, across all three?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Uh, shall offer rent by the bedroom and conventional leases in any of the units, and that, that's correct. I think originally it was, uh, west of North Street, and now it's throughout the whole project, including the two seven store, the seven-story buildings?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just to let people know, and a number, a number of other things are in here. Here's where I am now. And I'm addressing the parcels that are west of North Street. This is the section that the P and Z voted no, nine oh, on the preferred scenario amendment, which means the general land use and the zoning. There are a lot of comments that have been made, the university is just across the street. It's true. But not a whole lot was said about what's across the street the other way. There are single-family structures, zone for low to medium intensity future housing. Not C D five, not C D five D, and not five to seven stories. Uh, I'm glad that the public has written in on this topic, but I did ask on our public message board, what about the comp plan that will be approved, I'm going to say in some form or fashion this year. The land use and the proposed comp plan is, and I picked up my maps off the printer, and I've got them here somewhere.
Mixed-use medium.
Mixed-use medium.
Or, sorry, nope, neighborhood medium, based on the existing zoning.
Exactly, thank you. Right now, it is existing neighborhood.
Correct.
Okay, and in the new one, it is, you said mixed-use medium?
Neighborhood medium.
All right.
And those are all based on the existing zoning districts for the most part.
Right. However, I asked about, uh, the public. Uh, the six thousand comments, et cetera, I asked how many comments were specific to this area and the comments in the, in this block, not the other. And, uh, I'm going to read, uh, what was sent to me, and it looks like there were just two. Uh, one said the area bound by the university, Moore Street and downtown, should have more density, the neighborhood medium. And another one said this street, Moore Street, should be the limit of downtown and mixed-use developments. The area west of this should be recognized as neighborhoods, fit only for the occasional low-volume commercial use with daytime businesses only and no hotels. So we didn't have a groundswell of, gee, this should be high-density, high-intensity, high-whatever. We, 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 we didn't get that. Um, there was one, one that says more density than, than neighborhood. So, um, I'm looking at this, and for the, for those of you that have been following the comp plan discussion, uh, there was no suggested changes to the preferred scenario amendment along the way, am I correct about that, from the committee that met?
Correct.
I'm pres, okay. So, um, not much has been said about the historical nature of the neighborhood. I am really thrilled that the developer has offered, uh, the houses up for, to go to another location, and I really hope that that happens and happens soon for you. So, my problem is with the four stories, y'all knew that I wanted to do three to begin with. And I, I drive that way to church when I go the back way, which is how I usually go, because I go to Presbyterian Church. And on my way home, I drive it this way, and then I drive this da, street, and then I go down Comanche Street, and then I drive the other way around. And I'm just trying to imagine four stories up on that corner. And I just don't think that it fits in, I don't think that's a reasonable transition into the rest of it. I could do three stories further down, I continue the three stories. So that's where, let's see, we've already talked about parking, that's my concern. So, uh, I'm going to make a motion that on the conditions on item eight, that we change from four stories to three stories, not changing the part about bedrooms per unit. And that's my motion, is to read shall not exceed three stories. And I'm looking to see if I get a second. Okay, so, I made the motion, Mr. Gonzalez does the second. Um, it was hard for me to go to vote on the PSA, I'm having really strong second feelings about that, and also even for the C D five. So, that's where we are, that's my motion, we've got more people at home, has Mr. Scott gotten on? It takes him a little longer to get home. So that's my motion, we have a second.
Mayor, I'd just like to offer one consideration, if that's okay.
You go right ahead, thank you.
That the surrounding properties are zoned multifamily, MF twelve, twenty-four, eighteen, and they would be permitted, if they were to redevelop as-is, by right up to four stories.
And that's why I bought into it last time, and thanks for the reminder for the public. But that is twelve and twenty-four, that's small.
Smaller units per acre.
Way smaller. And, um, so it, it's not, it's not just, just the height, it's the density, it's at many more units. So, this is my motion, I'm going to put it out there, and then I'm going to have to think what I'm going to do on the PSA and the zoning, which we are going to need to split into two.
Can I have the developer come up, I wanted to ask a question for you, please? How many rooms are we losing going from three, from going from four stories to three stories?
At least sixty.
And you're talking about bedrooms, I assume?
No, we're not talking about bedrooms, we're talking about units.
Okay.
So this would be affecting those, uh, ten-plus individuals that, um, we talked about saving these units for? So this would definitely be cutting down, so that would be sixty more units that they don't have access to.
Yes.
I'm definitely not in favor of going to three stories, just because you're taking, if we want this to be for everybody, for this to be conventional, I, I don't understand why we're taking apart or taking away rooms. The point is to provide housing, uh, even possibly affordable housing, which we just talked about, for these individuals, again, those are sixty more bedrooms or sixty more apartments that they don't have access to. I just wanted to bring that up, we can talk about, cause he said we're taking off sixty more.
Does that mean that there's a hundred and eighty left? If it's sixty per stories, I mean per, one story?
To some degree, yes, but there, there are amenities that are, there's a fitness center, there's, there's study rooms, there's think, there's other things. So to some degree, the top story doesn't have that.
Oh, that's right.
So, the other stories, yes, you're gonna knock them way down to.
Hundred fifty?
Under, a lower.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I echo those sentiments from Councilman Mendoza.
All right, I'm, I'm still just like, okay, so Mayor, again, your rationale for going down to three is what again? You said you like drove around, or what was it, and like the, the density and the what?
Probably for the seventy-fifth time, um, that neighborhood, you've only got a couple of blocks till you get to Moore Street, then you're into am I right that there's historical district, once you start at Moore Street, Ms. Hernandez?
Yeah, a little south of this, but yeah.
Okay. But, but they, they currently stop at Moore Street in the residential area?
Yes, yes, Moore Street is the extent, mhm.
Okay. Um, I, I'm hoping that we never get past uh Moore Street for multiple-story apartment complexes. I personally don't want seven stories up next to Moore Street. I know there's a little ways to go, but once this starts going, it's going. Uh, I don't wanna set the precedent for the four, and that's where I am.
Gotcha. So, I hear that, but whenever folks are saying we're setting a precedent, I also think that that's like the onus is on us to take everything on a case-by-case basis. And then on our community to continue to organize and to continue to like show up when things might be problematic and if folks perceive like going and extending past Moore Street as an issue. Like, I feel like that's part of like community moving. And so to me, it's like, the, the precedent thing, press, like setting that as a concern is not super compelling to me personally. Um, uh, yeah, I just wanted to share that out. Um, and when I say case-by-case pa, basis, it's like, I, my understanding is if we move to three, that the deal is dead, like it's, it's just not feasible. And so, when I, when I have to like take it in the larger perspective, it's like we're losing out on you know, money that could be going to our schools, money that could be going, you know, I mean, I don't know, it's complicated. It's complicated, I guess. But, thank you for providing your rationale. I don't agree with it, but I, I appreciate you helping me understand.
When we're talking about. Yeah, when we're talking about zoning, the thing is, does it, does it fit, either fit into the neighborhood, or is it a reasonable transition to go someplace else? Um, and to me, that's what the three stories does. And yes, they could do the four, but it's not gonna be uh as dense with the zoning that they have now. I mean, I, I could go through a whole lot more about, you know, people talking about, oh, but there's already multifamily zoning, yes, but it's not C D five and five D, which is five to seven stories and let's just, you know, put as many as we can on there. So.
Right.
Anyway.
I hear you, I just think like the fear of setting the precedence and all that, it just doesn't trump like that, the overall. My overall opinion that it, this is like a good, a good deal, good development, um, but again, I feel like if it, the deal is going to die if we go down to three and it's like that for me, it's like, kind of, y'all know I struggle with this, finding common ground. We had a whole, we had multiple three AM meetings about that. I feel like part of finding common ground is also just like naming what you're willing to put forth. I don't know, I feel like it's just one, one story, like, whatever, y'all know what I'm saying.
Anyone else? We, we, we heard from Mr. Prather. Mr. Gleason?
Yeah, Mayor, um, look, I know that the M F twenty-four and twelve and eighteen are different densities. But this is about height to me, and they've already come down to four over there. And if it's a three-story building and they do four-story M F twenty-four and eighteen next door, like, I, I don't, I don't see why four is a big, a big problem there, so. I'm not gonna be supporting the amendment, especially since the developer said that is one area where it could be a deal breaker. But um, I, if this was the end of that development and next door there wasn't M F twenty-four and eighteen in between there, but it, the twenty-four and eighteen continue on, and I don't think the density has anything to do with it. This is about height, so the height restricting, restriction, and we've already gone into the parking part of it, so um, I won't be in support of it going to, from four to three.
Mayor, is there any middle ground here where we could stay with three stories, but stay with three bedrooms? Is that something that you'd be willing to talk about?
It is three bedrooms, we didn't change that and I didn't suggest changing that.
Okay, I just, you had mentioned earlier that you mentioned one to two bedrooms instead of the.
That doesn't matter on the height.
Well, I'm just saying if there's some kind of.
That's not, that's not gonna change the density all that much. I, I even look, like I said, driving by there, you know, I had looked to see if the part that is lower, that's lower than street level at one point, I could go with three and some there, but I know that sometimes you don't want to, to dig and that's a much more expensive proposition. And so I have gone through a number of these things in, in my head. And um, and I think Mr. Kenyon's probably thought about some of these things and what's doable and what's not doable. He has not offered anything up, which I'm gonna take as that's, he's not seeing any of those other options as being doable. Um, I certainly would let him speak if he wishes to, um, before we finish this, I think that's fair. And whenever, just walk on up to the podium whenever you're ready.
I just definitely wanna find a common ground here, please.
I'm trying, but the, the, I, I didn't like the seven stories either.
I know, I know.
So, for me, this, this is my compromise.
Could I add some?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you very much. Um, just one point, I, I mean, and I totally understand where you're coming from with, with the height and the concerns, but just something else that I just wanted to throw out there, because when we first started this project and we first came in, we also had the lots past that under contract. So we removed, it was before we actually went through planning commission. That was one of the very first concessions, as we were talking through all of this.
All the way to Mary Street?
Not all the way to Mary Street, but it was the next lot, it was that next lot. And so, we pulled that back to have some sort of buffer. But the, I guess the one point that I wanted to make is, um, you know, the concern with height, you know, that entire block to Moore Street can go to four stories currently. And if the, Mr. Kenyon or anybody, for that matter, if this project doesn't go forward, somebody could come back in and purchase multiple lots and still end, I mean, so, so you're not actually really, I mean, I mean.
But it's gonna be less dense.
Well, but if they buy that whole block, they're getting M F eighteen, M F twenty-four, they combine it all together, they go higher. What I'm saying is you, you've got that, you've got all the way to Moore Street that's already M F twelve, eighteen, or twenty-four in some variety. So they can go four stories now. So you could replat that, make it into one large property and get a lot more density. Makes sense when I'm, so, I mean, he, so right now, we just have the three lots. But let's say somebody else came in and they purchased that one lot that we had originally looked at, and the next one and the next one. You can plat all of those together and have them zoned for multifamily. You still have the height and you end up with more density. And so, not where, not something that we were looking at doing at this point. We were, you know, the whole objective, when Mr. Kenyon looked at this, was take that extra strip out and not go to the C D five on that. Get a little bit more height, but not have that extra property and bring it back towards North Street and to his other development. And so, um, you know, that wasn't something that went through the whole process, but that, I just wanted to throw that out there because that was something that we, we talked about early on is, you know, let's make sure there's a buffer along there.
Yeah, I, I'm looking at the map. The twenty-four is where those, is it two, four plexes or six plexes?
I think it are six plexes.
Okay. Then you've got a strip of M F eighteen and another block, and the rest of it is twelve.
So, so you.
M F twelve going to Moore Street.
Sure, so theoretically, you could get more density if you combined all of it, you would just be, you'd get twenty.
At the same zoning, you're gonna get more density?
Well, because you can combine them together so you have more acreage, is what I'm saying, so you're able to.
But it doesn't increase the density per acre.
But, so right now, you're looking at smaller lots that aren't an acre. So, I mean, if you were to try to develop just one of those lots at point two-five, you're looking at, you know.
With setbacks and other stuff, there's, I get what you're saying, but I don't see it as a whole lot more. It's not like C D five zoning.
I mean, it's not C D five zoning, which is why we reduce from four, four rooms to three bedrooms and why we reduce from five-story to four-story, story is to try to find something that would be comparable to what they can already do in height. So, I mean, as we're looking for that, you're going from fourteen stories of the Aspire to seven, to six, and then down to four. So you're, I mean, it's, if you look at the bird's eye view, it's a pretty significant slope there and drop. And I'm not saying that it's not at the top of that lot, but as you, as you drive by it, and I did the same thing today. I drove over there at lunch today and just kinda watched students and watched what, what all was happening is and you know, as you're looking at it, you've still got the engineering building and you've still got all of those buildings across the street. Even though they're catty corner, you've got a lot going on. And so, potentially that could go to four stories all the way to Moore Street, is, is just all I'm, I'm saying now. So you still could end up with that same height and.
Less density.
Less, same impervious cover though, so the building can cover the same amount, so. Seventy-five to eight, is seventy-five percent an M F and eighty percent is what we're proposing, so not a huge.
Not a whole lot of difference.
Right, yes ma'am.
On the lots that you're talking about, I think you said there were M F twelve?
Uh huh.
You sound real confident that you can get them, change the zoning pretty easily.
I wasn't saying change the zoning necessarily, what I was saying is that those lots can be combined, which could potentially get a little bit more density. And they already have the height, that's all I'm saying. We're not looking at that, I'm just saying that because that whole block is already M F zoned. They already are entitled to do multifamily all the way to Moore Street. And they're already entitled to go to four stories.
Right, right.
So, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, that would require quite a bit of plating, my gosh. Okay, now that's the only question I, I had.
Yes, sir.
Let's read for a second here.
Yes, you may.
I have, I have to agree with Shannon that um, and I, I understand the way it looks right now. The four stories may look a little bit high, but directly across the street, they're building a seven-story dormitory. Right, you go next door and the point is six stories, the Aspire is fourteen stories, you know, there's.
And that's going the other direction.
That's going the other direction and I understand that. But, but if I'm, if I'm on the west side and I look at a building that's twenty-four units and I look directly into it from the neighborhood, it's still four stories, no matter how dense it is, no matter what it is, I still see four stories, right? And this goes up the hill, so they're never see anything that's further up the hill. It's not going to be, it's, it, is it more dense? It is more dense, but, but if, but for what the neighbors see to the west, it will make no signif, it, it will make no difference cause they'll still see a four-story building. Right?
But it's gonna be less dense. That's one way to reduce the, the density is to have fewer floors. We've got, I, you know, I've got a whole lot of stuff here that I could go through about traffic and all this other stuff. And I've said I don't like the, the sixth and seventh story. There's a whole lot of stuff, I'm, I'm not gonna bore people with.
Okay.
But there's a whole lot of reasons that that there's, there's gonna be issues um with, with all these changes. There's just gonna be a lot of issues. Um, I think you're gonna have more cars than you think you're gonna have, cause these are gonna be, you said they're gonna be market rate. Um, I guess it's possible that students could choose to, to live in a nicer place and not have a car. Some, if they can afford that, they're gonna have a car too. So, we've already resolved parking and I lost that one, so it is what it is. Uh, but there's just all kinds of stuff. People say they want affordable housing, you've said this is gonna be market rate, I'm not criticizing you for that, but that's just what you said, I get it. So, anyway, Ms. Garza.
Can I say one more thing?
Uh, let her do hers and then I'll come back to you.
I was just gonna ask, you said, you know, you, you tried to do something with parking and it failed. Would, when we talk about, you know, meeting, you know, finding common ground or kinda just meeting halfway, um, would, and I obviously can't speak for my colleagues, but if we were to reduce parking, would you be fine with the four? But I, never mind, cause I don't even know if that's feasible for the developer, so, I don't know. Does that make sense, so it's like?
Okay.
You know, it's, it's a little give and take, but I don't know, I don't even know if that's feasible, so.
Okay.
I, 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 I think we've, we're done with the parking part.
Okay, let me, let me say that.
Yes, sir.
The, the, where you're talking about on the corner is at street level, right? Now, on the corner of Lindsay and North is at, is at street level. And I understand that as you move to the south and to the, so as you move to the south and to the west further, the property drops more than twenty feet. Right, so if you put three stories here, you potentially could put four stories in the back and the building would be no higher. Do you agree with that? The building would still be flat, it's just because of the topography changes.
Right.
Throughout the slope of the lot. So would, would be four stories in the back would gain no more height, but it would allow more units in the back. And.
You're talking about the property that Ms. Mattingly was talking about?
I'm talking about the property that Sissy Taylor owns.
Okay.
Yes. And so, I'm trying to come to a compromise here because.
Well, that's the deal, that, that's what, when I looked and noticed, you know, a lot of it was lower.
Yeah.
And I thought, okay, I, I don't know how we do this with Ms. Hernandez, say three and a half, but it could be four stories on part of it. But it doesn't go higher than the three stories on that high corner.
On that high corner?
I, and I, and I was willing to do that.
Okay.
Because you're, the three stories, it's, the fourth is going down and not up.
Right. Understood.
But, that would, that, that still wouldn't be the full part. So, my concerns about density, uh, that's allowing a little more, but not the full sixty.
Right.
Yeah.
I agree. Okay, so if, so if we agree to this, are we, are we good with the parking as it's written? Are we, are we, are we okay to? I mean, I, I gotta talk to Sissy because ultimately this is her property. If I can't build as many units, I obviously cannot pay the same price, it's just an equation that everyone can hear. You can see how I can make that leap.
I understand that.
So I would need to, I can talk to Sissy about this and see. But if, if that was the case, that it's three stories on the corner and the back corner does not look any higher, but it provides for four.
And it's what, not more than a third? Half?
I don't know, I have no idea.
I don't either.
I mean, but, but it wouldn't look any higher anyways, it would be, it would look to be three stories throughout the, right, throughout the whole thing.
But it's, for me, it's not just the height, it's also the density. That's why I can go three plus twenty percent, but not, not, and I, and I don't think you're gonna build it and you're gonna build a full story that people would live in, lower than, than street level. That's just, nobody do that, but.
No one could possibly dig all that out.
No, not suggesting that.
Right.
That's not where I was going, and, and, and my maps don't have topography on them, so, anyway.
I mean, all's, all's I could tell you is that, is that as the topography allows, we would build the units. But it would never look from the corner, from the people driving by on North Street, the people driving by on Lindsay, they would say it's a three-story building. The vegetation and everything behind the building on the west side, everyone would say it's a three-story building. There would be no way to tell that it's not a three-story building, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, we just don't know what, what percent that is.
Mayor, I, I can see his.
Does that matter, though?
Yeah, because part of it is the density. I'm not happy with the sixth and seventh story. I think that's gonna put way too many people in this one small amount of space with streets that were not designed for this. And so, this is a way to get some of that lower. I, and I get that people are gonna walk, but I, I don't know how often you've tried to drive down Comanche Street during the day?
But you, okay, but, but you, but you asked me to provide, you asked me to provide a traffic study and I hired the traffic study that does all the traffic studies for every big project in San Marcos and they came back that because of the number of people that don't move their cars during the day and the people that move either early at night or they're waitresses or bartenders, it doesn't cause an issue on the, on the streets.
I'm talking about the pedestrian traffic.
Too many people on the sidewalk?
By pedestrian traffic. And people walking?
You, you, well, you can't get down the street.
Down Comanche?
Yeah.
But is that expected because you, it's the most populated part of the city? Isn't that expected because it's probably the most populated part of the county? That you wanna have more foot traffic and more traffic, no matter, even if the roads were built for all of this?
No, I'm, I think it's great that people are walking and not using their car, that many of them will have a car somewhere and they're not gonna move it because they're gonna. that many of them will have a car somewhere and they're not gonna move it because they're gonna walk, because they can get to the grocery store and, and whatever.
Yes ma'am.
Um, so that's good, just, anyway, forget I said anything, we just need a better, uh.
Mayor.
Um, crossing system there.
Mayor, can I chime in?
Ms. Prather, go ahead.
We've heard, we've heard, um, from Shannon and from, you know, about how this, you know, this neighborhood can be built to four stories by rights, by right, not, you know, going through a process by right. Um, you know, we've heard the, the pros of, of density and, and that four stories and three stories, it's the real difference between can this project move forward or not? Um, yeah, I really think, you know, you, you, we, the developers made a lot of concessions with, uh, housing affordability with the current residents. I really think it's time that we allow this four stories on that side. I think there's, the, the reason, the compelling reasons for it to move forward vastly outweigh three stories.
Okay.
Hey, mayor, I have a question.
Oh, good, you're on.
Yeah, no, I'm on, I, um, when we first voted for this and you voted no, we went through a whole range of coming back full circle to get back to the same spot, so we could vote yes. So I don't understand why the, the shortcomings now, as far as, you know, I mean, I respect your decision on things, but I'm just saying, I don't, I don't understand. Like, I'll give you an example, like Darren Casey's building, when we were approving it back when, he wanted to go up to fifteen stories instead of thirteen, and I told everybody, you couldn't tell the difference if it was thirteen or fifteen by looking at it, there's just no way, you know? Now, it seems like you've kind of got a happy medium here to where it will work for the view and all that, but your density isn't really that thick, you know? And, and by not doing this, you're also, you know, us, there's gonna be problems with it if he has to walk from his project, that are gonna affect the people that are already there, that are already. From him. And they're not gonna have to forward to perhaps, you know, because it is getting almost condemnable. I mean, David Casey used to live there, it's like, it was really bad then. Anyway, that's just kind of my thought.
Well, I started with three. I let myself get talked into the four. I've since had time to drive around again, keep trying to picture it, and I'm, and the amount of density, um, the seven stories is what did it for me. Uh, I, I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't know if the seven stories would go, but it did. And that was what, I think that was the last thing that we did. And when I looked at that, I went, I'm having way more trouble with the four story than I did before y'all went to seven. So, that's where we are. So I think it's probably time to just go ahead and call for a vote unless someone has something they absolutely has to say. Um, Ms. Cordova.
Wait, I'm sorry, but remind me, now what are we voting on?
The, the motion, I'm sorry, you're right, I need to state that again right before the vote. The motion is in item eight, uh, which is the property west of North Street currently says shall not exceed four stories in height and shall be limited to no more than three bedrooms per unit, not touching the bedrooms, um, but I'm saying to change from four to three. And that's my motion. So, Ms. Cordova will vote now. Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
No.
Mr. Mendoza?
Can you come back to me, I'm on time, so, thank you.
Mr. Prather?
No.
Mr. Scott?
No.
Ms. Garza?
No.
Mayor Houston? Yes. Mr. Mendoza?
Still gotta do it.
It's already failed.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yes.
The motion failed. Four to three. Actually, three to four. Okay, so that motion failed, and I don't think that I have any, yes ma'am.
Mayor, the developer's asking if he could approach the podium, he may have an additional concession to offer.
Oh, certainly.
Okay.
All right, so. I'm gonna just be known as a concession guy up here, I guess, and, uh, um, as painful was, as it is for me to have to go back and ask Sissy this again, I ask her, and she, which is uncomfortable for me, I ask her to reduce her price again so that we can do your three story project. I don't understand it, it makes me upset, it reduces the tax roll. Um, saying that there's gonna be too many people on the sidewalk upsets me, or because this, because we're going to improve the sidewalks, we're going to improve the lighting. I'll say what I have to say, I understand, I don't wanna be disrespectful, but, um, she's made that concession so we can make three stories work, if that's what, if that's what you think is best for this project.
We've al, we've already voted, I appreciate, I appreciate that very much from, from you and her, but we voted and we're at four.
Right, so here's the thing, I guess, I think, I'm just trying to be for real right now, like, if we did three, like, I, I think when we look at the fullness of the project, like, what is most likely to get to pass it through? And is it, is some of y'all gonna be like, no, y'all didn't wanna go to, to four, so now we're gonna cancel it all, like? I mean, y'all didn't wanna go down to three, like, so my thing is, like, insert Robert.
So, so mayor.
There you go, insert Robert's role in order.
Hold, hold on a second. Uh, let.
There you go. That's where I was going with.
Okay, and, uh, Mr. Scott said something too, let, let me just find out where he's going.
Motion to reconsider, so we get back on the table. Need a second.
Ms. Garza, were you trying to make that motion, in which case I'll let Mr. Scott second it?
The way I don't care.
I'm sorry, she's got either a cough or a sneeze, and I, I see her nodding her head. So you're, you're a yes on the motion to reconsider?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we have Ms. Garza. It's a motion to reconsider, and reconsider the motion that we just did?
Yep.
I'm assuming, but I don't wanna presume. Mr. Scott's saying that's what he's seconding. Okay, so, motion second, uh, number eight, make an arrow up there, okay. Um, so what we're gonna vote on now is whether or not we want to even talk about item eight. And then if it's yes, then we can talk about item eight in my amendment again. Or if it's no to reconsider, then we just move on. Am I right, Mr. Gary?
Yes.
That's correct, mayor, it needs to.
Okay.
Pass to reconsider before you can discuss it.
And I don't remember if reconsider has conversation or not, but I don't think we probably need any more, so.
I, I do have a question, if we do, if we do approve this, I have a question to go into it, but.
Well, let's see if it, because it might fail.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, you have to get to the.
Right.
To reconsideration before you discuss any merits.
Ms. Cordova, we will vote on the motion to reconsider, uh, the amendment to item eight. Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Mr. Mendoza?
Yes.
Mr. Prather?
Um, yes.
Yeah, this is, this is just a reconsideration. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Mm-hmm.
And Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Motion passed seven to zero. Did you get a, both, Mr. Gonzalez?
Uh, yes.
Okay, motion passed seven to zero. Okay, so now, uh, my motion to amend is on the table again as it was presented, correct, Mr. Gary? We don't do this very often, so.
That's correct, mayor, so you have an opportunity to reconsider your motion and the vote.
And conversation on that motion.
That's correct.
If people have conversation. Looking to see if there's hands raised on those that are not in the room, um, not seeing any.
I think Matthew had a question, he can go first while I just.
Okay, I was checking in with y'all first, then I was gonna go to Mr. Mendoza, then I'll come back to y'all. But hands raised helps me know if you have something or not.
Thank you, Ms. Garza, thank you, mayor. So, um, if the developer goes back and we decide to vote on three stories instead of four stories for this, the developer goes back and, uh, the project will not go forward with this. Are we able to go back and change it back to four stories? Or is the three stories stuck to, whether the project fails or passes within the developer and the seller themselves?
At that point, I think they would have to reapply because final action has been taken. Usually reconsideration occurs, uh, either at the same meeting or maybe it can carry over to the next, the next meeting, but generally, that's, that's it, it's gonna be it.
Thank you.
If he chose to come back with something else, um, a different, just as an example, different zoning request or whatever, speaking in general now, can that be done without another application fee and starting everything over? But I realize that there are certain things that have to be public hearings with notice to the public, and I'm in no way suggesting that we skip that step if it's required.
Right, so generally how it works under the development code, if it's substantially similar to the previous project, um, well, this relates to a denial. So first of all, I guess there hasn't been a denial because you, you would be granting the conditional use permit. Uh, so there, but if, so yes, uh, he could reapply, but it would normally have to be substantially different, um.
If, if it were denied, now if it just didn't pass, then it's just in limbo and thoughts and, and conversations could continue.
There's no time limit there for him, he could come back immediately.
There's one that takes a year, that's the one that has to be a.
If denied.
That's the denial.
And the other one can come back next week or whenever.
Yeah, and, and I'm, 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 in my mind, I'm not in the denial mode because if he has other things to offer, um, I'm all ears and I don't want him to have to pay another application fee and I don't want him to have to start over. It would just allow the conversation to continue. I, I don't know if he wants to do that, I personally would like to allow him to do that.
So I'll, I'll raise one, I'll raise one other point. You know, Roberts rules is one of those things that it's a, it's a guiding, uh, it's guiding rules for the council, but it's also subject to the, um, Roberts rules can be suspended. Essentially, if no council member objects, right, you can sort of suspend the rule. So, I guess what could happen if your scenario played out. Um, normally Roberts rule says, well, you can't reconsider. What would have to happen is, uh, you could have two council members under our process uh, request to have an item placed back on the agenda. The council could discuss it so that the public could be aware of it, that you wish to reconsider this item um, at, at a later date. Now, what would be required, um, remind me, Amanda, but the C U P did have a public hearing notice for the C U P?
Yes, all of the items.
So a reconsideration would require a new public hearing. But at first, you would just have two council members bring it back, say, uh, notwithstanding Roberts rules, we'd like to bring this back, and the council could vote to say, okay, we're willing to bring it back at the next meeting.
And can any, so you're saying they would have to bring it back for reconsideration, which means for reconsideration, you have to vote it on the prevailing side? Or if it just comes back for a discussion, would that be any two council members?
If you wanna follow somewhat the rules of Roberts, Roberts rules, you should have the two of, on the prevailing side be willing to bring it back. But again.
And, and my, and my thought is if we don't deny it, like I said, the conversation can continue, and if there's something, uh, baked, if you will, ready for us to vote on, I would certainly entertain that. I, that was my thinking, but we gotta.
Mayor, could I interject on that?
So that's an option.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, in the past, I just wanted to note the challenge, when city council doesn't approve a zoning change, but also doesn't deny the zoning change, we have a few right now that are just kind of in limbo, not a lot is changing. So that does put a burden on staff where we're almost going back to the beginning of the application process, even though, you know, at this point, we've kind of set it aside, it's on second reading, we're ready to move on to the next item on our plate. So just keeping that in mind, if you have very specific items that you would want us to go back with, but I think at this point, with the conditions being in the, the condition that they are, this is about as baked as I can imagine it will get.
I, I was thinking if it came back in a somewhat different form.
With, and I would recommend if this is not the proposal that council would want to see at this location, that we have an approval or a denial and kind of close this case. And if the applicant wanted to change and do something different, that we started a new application for that process.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying not to do. I, I understand everything that you're saying, and I, I get that, but this, this is a, a, a unique case. And, and all my years of voting on zoning things, this is the hardest one I have ever had. Um, and I, and Mr. Kenyon has noted the concessions that he has made, and I, we've never seen that before. So I appreciate all the things that you're willing to do, especially those for the, um, for, for your current residents. But, let, let's see where we go, and.
Of course.
But we'll talk about that in a minute. I believe Ms. Mattingly had something she wanted to say, if so, you gotta come to the podium, you know the rules.
Yes, ma'am, I, I just wanted to make sure I unders, I'm, I'm understanding where we're, so, right now, we're at, we're at, Mr. Kenyon has said he would agree to the three stories, and we didn't get that's.
We haven't voted on it yet.
Okay, and so, um, I was just trying to, and so then from there, we're, we have to go vote on the whole.
Right, then we would be voting on the whole C U P, then we have items five and six to come.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure that.
Status check.
I was just making sure that I would, I understood that, and, and the other thing, I, and I don't know if there's, there's some opportunity on the three stories that we, um, you know, I know you'd mentioned concern with that corner, and is there an opportunity to agree to the three stories in some configuration that, that drops that back as we, as we go forward? I just wanted to make sure I understood.
Or three, three at the corner.
Three at the corner, possibly four at the back.
Right.
It does go downhill.
Correct, yes, yeah.
That's where I was calling it three point two or three point whatever, but I, I don't, I don't know, the construction cost may be too much to even consider that, that's not for me to say.
Sure, okay, thank you.
We're open to that if you're.
Yeah. Council, are y'all ready to vote?
Yep, mayor, I, I got a procedural question.
Yes, sir.
If this, if this amendment for three stories, or drop it down three stories fails, and then we vote on the main motion for the C U P, and that doesn't get the super majority, can we reconsider this amendment?
Super maj, the super majority is not required for the C U P?
Right, but also clarification, if this motion fails, there's still room to make an alternative motion.
Yeah.
So you don't really need to reconsider, you can just make an alternative motion.
Right.
That's maybe some, like you say, mayor, your three point two, whatever it is, what, you know, or it could be, yeah, any alternative.
We're, we're back on item eight of agenda item fifteen, which is four stories to three, that's back on the table. And this, 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 there's no super majority on item fifteen at all, on any of these things.
Correct.
So, are y'all ready to vote? Not seeing any hands up on the remote, not seeing anybody jumping up and down to talk here. We're gonna vote again, Ms. Cordova. Mr. Mendoza?
No.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Just for clarification, we're talking about from four stories to three stories, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a no.
Always good to know what you're voting on. Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
I think that was.
I said aye.
Okay, thank you.
That was an aye.
Okay. So motion passes, six to one. Six to one, okay. Does anybody have any further amendments? If not, we're ready to vote on the main motion, item 15, the student housing conditional use permit as amended for those that were successful amendments. The ones that weren't successful, we just forget about it. Let's vote. Mr. Prather.
And this is the main motion for the CUP, correct?
Yes, sir. Main is, as the, with the successful amendments.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye.
Mayor Houston.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
No.
Mr. Gleason.
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza.
Aye.
Motion passes, six to one. Okay, so now we will go to, if there's no objections, item five, Ms. Cordoba.
Consider approval of ordinance 2024-15 on the second of two readings approving an amendment to the preferred scenario map of the city's comprehensive plan to change the designation for approximately 1.139 acres of land generally located southwest of the intersection between Lindsay Street and North Street from existing neighborhood to high intensity, including procedural provisions and declaring an effective date.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Mr. Prather. I heard Ms. Garza on the second. A super majority is needed for this. Ms. Hernandez? With the three stories, I'm just gonna say not four stories. Not four full stories. Do we still need high intensity here for the PSA?
Without doing a full analysis of the zoning districts, I think the answer to that is going to be yes. So I think last time I kind of turned around my drawing, which I pulled up again so I could take a look at it. I think yes, because the way, if we have a denial on the high intensity and it remains existing neighborhood, the zoning districts that the applicant can choose from require them to plat the property in a different configuration, which results in different setbacks, potential requirements to have an official courtyard for courtyard housing, limits the density to 24 units per acre, and based on the conversations I've had with the applicant, we, we do need that CD five to have those design, not the design standards, but the development standards to make the, the property actually work and fit on one lot.
Um, yeah, because we talked about the ND four.
Yes, I looked at character district four, which would require the, the preferred scenario amendment. I looked at ND four and I looked at neighborhood commercial, which also allows some multifamily, and all of them, specifically even neighborhood commercial, is nine units per lot. So it has to do with subdividing the property into a way to make the project fit, but it wouldn't potentially be able to be one building like they're proposing.
Right. Yeah, I had hopes for the ND four, but that didn't get us where we wanted to go.
Much larger setbacks.
Well, I think that's just designed for a much larger piece of property. So I was hoping to go for what's on the, basically existing and, and new PSAs, even with the new comp plan was medium, right?
I was looking at our proposed, we have a proposed equivalency table, so when we adopt the comp plan, we don't, we have to go in and update the code. I think we would have to at least get mixed use low or mixed use medium. So mixed use medium is what downtown is becoming, so we're still kind of expanding that, that highest density that we're allowing in the future comp plan. We could potentially do mixed use low for character district five, though it's not preferred on this table, so I would just need to go through and run that calculation of what not preferred looks like. I think it's fine because there's not single family in the vicinity, but.
But on, on this map that you kindly provided for me today, the, the PSA for the new one is medium. There's a little strip of high where those, did you say four or six plexes are, and there's two of them? I kept thinking there was one, but then I discovered there was two when I looked at the Google map.
And Hayden, those, those maps are actually in the preferred scenario amendment immediately after the staff recommendation, if I'm not mistaken, if, if we want to pull those up.
Yeah. Yeah, there's 1,300 pages here. Sometimes I miss one.
Yes, there we have it.
My bad, but you provided them as I asked, and that was, that was wonderful. So neighborhood medium is what it is proposed before we knew about this project.
Yes, ma'am. And that allows, if and when the comp plan is adopted with the translation table that staff proposed, it would allow a change to neighborhood density district. In order to accommodate the applicant's request, we would need to get at least a mixed use low, which is just south of this property along North Street. There's a section there identified as mixed use low, or we would have to go to mixed use medium.
But, but my goal is not to keep extending the high density and so, and not in the plan either, so, okay. Council, we're, we're back to the PSA that we had before. Comments, thoughts?
Are we at a super majority again?
Yep.
Requirement?
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's important for me to just like name a couple of things. So I think it's important for me to share how complicated it was for me to, or my stance on this development. Distinguishing between genuine community concern, like distinguishing genuine community concern from personal interests has been exceptionally, exceptionally difficult in this situation. I'm gonna ultimately support the development. It's with frustration and reservation because, and again, I just think it's important to name, I, my perception is our failure to prioritize honest dialogue on affordable housing leaves us feeling like we're settling for concessions from developers. I also think that it makes it seem like elected officials seem guided by fear of backlash from their base rather than genuine community needs. And I, I really think, like, we're gonna end up in this situation again, and it's fueled by elected officials and city leadership who have historically failed to confront the issue of affordable housing critically and with imagination. So it's, this, this whole process has been super frustrating to me. The university, developers, and others take advantage of the structures that we've created, right? And until we address that, we're gonna keep ending up in situations like this. Personally, I think we can't claim to prioritize community wellness and housing without funding initiatives like tenants' rights advocacy, making participation in planning and zoning conversations more accessible, directing our very well-paid state and federal lobbyists to push for policy recommendations by entities like the Housing Playbook Project, Texas Housers, and so on. All our, all our neighbors' concerns were super valid, but denying this development doesn't address any of them. So I think it's really important for me to name that before we go into voting. Yeah, I mean, we, we want to have a for real conversation about affordable housing, we can, but I, I just don't see the interconnectedness with this development. So, yeah, that's all I got.
I was gonna say my two cents. I think it's, this, this complex web of regulations and zoning is part of the problem that's driving up housing costs.
The complexity of our regulations, did you say? I thought that we had less complexity. There's only five housing districts anymore, and there used to be, what, 12 more? But in, in my opinion, that is what has, I, I think by trying to relax them, we cause more problems. Predictability is good with the multifamily 12, 14, whatever, 12, 24, 18, we knew. And it was easier for me to say yes to things when I knew what was gonna happen, but.
And if I can add just a little bit of clarity, the property under consideration for the preferred scenario amendment is MF 18 and 12. The 24 is within the downtown high intensity zone.
Right. Yes, I was gonna make a note that this is just for the west of North Street. This is not for the rest of it, because the rest of it already has the, I was just saying designation.
Yes, ma'am.
That they need to go where, where, where they want to go. Okay, so if nobody else has anything else, we will vote on item five, which, as you said, is the change for this particular section from existing neighborhood to high intensity. And we'll vote. Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Ms. Garza.
Aye, I think the benefits far outweigh the concerns.
Mayor Houston? I'm gonna say aye, because we're closer to medium than high than we were before. Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Thank you to my colleagues who worked through this complex vote and compromised. That being said, aye.
The motion passed, six to one. And we're on to item six.
Consider approval of ordinance 2024-16 on the second of two readings amending the official zoning map of the city in case number CC 23-19 by resoning approximately 1.94 acres of land generally located at the south side of Lindsay Street between North Comanche Street and North Street and southwest of intersection between Lindsay Street and North Street for, from multifamily 12 MF-12 district, multifamily-18 MF-18 district, and multifamily-24 MF-24 district to character district five, CD five, and character district five downtown, CD five district, or subject to consent of the owner and another less intense zoning district classification, including procedural provisions and providing an effective date.
Before I, I take a motion, Mr. Gary, what do we need to do to, to split this? Because part of it requires a super majority and part of it does not.
That's correct, and we did this at the last meeting as well. The, and I apologize, I don't have memorized. I think the east side.
Does not require the super majority, the west side does.
Yes, and so I would just break it into two parts. And you may want to deal with the one that requires super majority first, and then, I'm just thinking, you know.
That's the way I have it on my worksheet here.
Beautiful, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to need separate motions, and so first, we're gonna be talking about the, the west side. So I'm looking for a motion on the west side.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning request change on the west side.
All right, is there a second?
Second, second that.
Okay, I heard Mr. Gleason, so I'll give him the second, and anything else? Anybody?
Thank you to developers for your compromising willingness to work with us through this process.
Okay. So we will vote, hold on. And the west side is the CD five, the other's gonna be the 5D, so this is the five. Okay. Ms. Garza?
Hmm, yes.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
The motion passes, six to one. Now, I'm looking for a motion for the east side, which is the 5D.
Mayor, make a motion to approve the east side of this development.
We have a motion to approve for Mr. Prather. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Garza. And this is just a regular, we need four, so reminder, anybody got anything on this one? I guess we'll vote. Mayor Houston?
Uh, no.
Mr. Gonzalez?
No.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Okay, the motion passes. Five to two. Okay, and that concludes our consent agenda, and we're going to continue on to item 16, so if you are choosing to leave now, I'm going to ask that you just do it quietly and let us continue with our meeting. And just know that chatter in the lobby, we can hear and hear, so we'd like to continue our meeting uninterrupted. Ms. Cordoba, let's, uh, let's hit item 16.
Consider approval of ordinance 2024-18 on the first and final reading authorizing the issuance and sale of an amount now to X631,100,000 of combination tax and revenue certification of obligation Series 2024, levying and add valorum tax and pledging certain surplus revenues in support of the certification, approving an official statement, a paying agent registered, register agreement for improving constructing, equipping, acquiring, and designing the city's water and wastewater system, including technology improvements, streets, sidewalks, public safety facilities, including fire station improvements, stormwater management for flood control and drainage, electricity, electric utility systems, and the payment of professional service in connection therewith, including legal fiscal and engineering fees and the cost of issuing the certificates of obligation and other matters related thereto, and providing for the approval of this ordinance 2024-18 on one reading and authorizing by state law.
Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Was that Mr. Prather?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Prather made the motion. I need a second. I'll second it. And I believe you have something for us.
Yes, this has been in the works since, I'm sorry, I guess my assistant director of finance, this has been in the works since fiscal year 24 budget process. We're getting ready to issue debt. Back in September 19th, you approved an ordinance with a capital improvement program. Back in February 6th, you were presented the detail of the projects that would be funded. And more recent, uh, February 20th, you authorized the resolution to go ahead, the notice of intent to issue the debt. This is the final step on this. We are going to have Dan Wegmiller present the pricing on what was done this morning.
All right, Mr. Wegmiller.
Great, thank you, Mayor, council members. Dan Wegmiller with Specialized Public Finance. As part of this process to sell the certificates of obligations, we had a rating call with Standard &amp; Poor's. Your bond ratings were affirmed at the double A rating level. I just wanted to take a, a quick second to note their comments. Again, this is a third party that reviews your rating in order for investors to make investment decisions. And they noted that the rating reflects the growing economy that has access to large regional economy centers. It also noted that the history of stable operating performance and very strong reserves that they anticipate to move, continue forward. that they anticipate to move, continue forward. They also noted the very strong management characterized by robust budget development framework, routine budget monitoring, formalized policies for investment and debt management. So all the positive comments that go along with a strong double A rating took place with this once again. As a result of that, I think the strong rating, the strong name that San Marcos carries in the investing community, we had the most bids I've seen come in on a bond sale in quite some time. You received 13 bids from various investment banks across the country. The winner was FHN Financial Capital Markets out of New York. They bid a 3.787485% to be exact. So exceptional bids, strong interest, which just continues the strong name that you all carry in the marketplace. With that, the bids, the bid result was incorporated into the ordinance that you already received from Bart Fowler and McCall, Parker, and Horton. So the ordinance is now complete based on this bid. So we're here to answer any questions or a motion to approve as presented is also.
Okay, Mr. Gary, do we need a motion to amend to put those numbers into this ordinance?
I think that's normal, but I defer to Mr. Fowler.
Because when it was published last week, the numbers were not in there.
That's correct, and for the record, my name is Bart Fowler, we're McCall, Parker, and Horton. It's a pleasure to serve the city's bond council. Typically, this situation happens on almost every bond sale, because we don't get the numbers until the day of pricing, which is the day of your meeting. So when a motion is made, if the motion can include direction to incorporate the pricing information that Dan Wegmiller just presented, that'll take care of everything, and we can get the ordinance completed that way.
Mr. Prather, are you good with that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, and Mr. Gleason, you good with that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Then if you're good with that, Mr. Gary, that's where we'll go with it. We know what we're voting on. Okay, I'm sorry, I seconded that and I was okay with it. Okay, so council, any questions, concerns? Let's vote.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Ms. Garza?
Aye.
And Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Let's roll on to item 17.
Consider approval of ordinance 2024-19 on one reading approved and established in an exception from the assessment of the city's add valorum property tax for eligible childcare facilities pursuant to Section 11.36 of the Texas Tax Code declaring an emergency and providing that this ordinance should be effective after one reading.
Okay, looking for a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mr. Gonzalez, I will second it. And.
Once again, Ismael Garcia, Assistant Finance Director. The item before you is an ordinance for your approval establishing an exemption for eligible childcare facilities. Per Texas Tax Code, Section 11.36, legislation was approved that local governments could opt in to provide an exemption of property taxes from between 50 to 100% of appraised value to either rental facilities of childcare or commercial. The childcare facilities must be licensed and registered with the Texas Workforce Commission, Texas Rising Star Program. So there's criteria that must be met. Normally, this would take two readings. It's being presented to you in an emergency for this one reading so that it can meet the deadline of the 2024 property tax levy.
Okay, and we have identified who these childcare centers are that meet the criteria, and we will be notifying them right away, because they don't have a lot of time.
That is correct, Mayor. The staff is prepared with communication upon your all's approval to send this information over to the facilities already identified, that they have the option to claim for this exemption.
Okay, this is wonderful, I'm glad the legislature did this, and. And that y'all will be doing the notifications right away. Counsel, is there any questions, concerns, other thoughts? If not, we'll vote.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
And Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero. Item 18.
Consider approval of ordinance 2024-20 on the first of two readings amending Chapter 86, Article 1, Division 1, water and wastewater line extensions of the San Marcos City Code by amending Section 86.003 to allow certain out-of-city connections to be made without applications for annexation, providing for the appeal of conflicting provisions, providing a savings clause, and providing an effective date.
Looking for a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Questions, concerns, thoughts? Ms. Cordova will vote. Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on to item 19.
Consider approval of Resolution 2024-63R approving a professional service agreement with Ardua Inc. to provide owner advisory services for the second wastewater treatment plan project in the estimated amount of $3,896,204, authorizing the city manager or her designee to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declaring an effective date.
Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Was that Mr. Scott?
Prather.
Uh, Mr. Prather made the motion, seconded by.
Me.
Second.
Heard Mr. Gonzalez first. Questions, thoughts, concerns? Ms. Cordova will vote. Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item 20. Consider approval of Resolution 2024-64R approving an on-call professional service agreement with the Freeze and Nichols Inc. for engineering, planning, and design for median bid and construction faces, face, services, and related to potential upgrades required for the wastewater system in an amount not to exceed $2,595,871,000, authorizing the city manager or her designee to execute the agreement on behalf of the city and declaring an effective date.
Looking for a motion? I'll make the motion.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Prather, I will second it. Any questions, comments? Uh, Ms. Cordova, let's vote. Ms. Garza?
Sorry, my mouse died, aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
And Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item 21. Consider approval of Resolution 2024-65R approving the submittal of the 2024 Revised Water Conservation Plan and Revised 2024 Drought Response Plan to the Texas Water Development Board and declaring an effective date.
Motion by.
Motion approved.
Motion by Mr. Prather, seconded by.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gonzalez, comments, anyone? Ms. Cordova will vote. Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item 22. Consider approval of Resolution 2024-66R approving the director of utilities or the utilities assistant director as the delegate of the director to serve as the City of San Marcos representative on the Canyon Regional Water Authority's Board of Managers, and declaring an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Prather, seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Ms. Reyes, I have a question on this. I assume that there's one seat, and we have, it's gonna be this person or this person. We're asked to authorize one or the other, and then y'all are gonna figure out who's gonna be the one? Okay. Okay, that's fine, I just wanna make sure we were clear, because that's, I don't think I've ever seen an appointment done that way before. Okay. Comments, others? Let's vote. Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Okay, motion pass, seven to zero.
Item 23. Consider approval of Resolution 2024-67R supporting the granting of economic development incentives under Chapter 380 of the Texas Local Government Code for a grocery store development, such incentives to include property and cell tax abatements for up to five years from the resolution adoption and declaring an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Uh, motion by Mr. Prather, seconded by.
I, me.
Um, I'll make that, Mr. Gonzalez. The issue here is we have to make some decisions, there's some discussions to have on that. Mr. Smith, if you want to address those, thank you.
Absolutely, good evening, Mayor, Council. Christian Smith, Economic and Business Development Manager, City of San Marcos. The impetus for council direction on this resolution is really to provide staff the tools needed to put together what we believe would be a compelling market signal and package to take to prospective grocery retailers to attract that kind of development here in San Marcos. We've received comments from council and the community in the past that that's something that's desirable, and this is just intended to clarify what council will be willing to get behind in print that we could take to the market.
But there's decisions for us to make, correct? We've given, we've been given some options?
Correct.
And we need to decide those. So we have a motion to approve, but we have to figure, there's blanks, and we've got to figure out what's gonna go in there. My question to council is, do y'all want to deal with this at 11:10 this evening with several items still on our agenda? Or would y'all support a motion to postpone?
Support a motion to postpone. I would.
I'll just make that motion, we'll see if it passes. Comments, anybody? All right, we're gonna go with the postpone. And see where it goes. We'll vote, Ms. Cordova.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Okay, the motion pass, seven to zero. Mr. Smith, we thank you for your hard work, and we're gonna go through that next, oh, I didn't say to the next meeting. I meant that, are we all good with that? Mr. Gary's not here to keep me straight. Generally, when we postpone, for lack of time, it's to the next meeting, so I think custom and whatever, we'll go with that. Uh, item 24.
Consider approval of Resolution 2024-68R approving and amending template for standard city board and commission bylaws in accordance with Section 2.073 of the San Marcos City Code, directing staff liaisons to boards and commissions to present such bylaws for adoption by the respective boards and commissions and declaring an effective date.
I will make a motion to approve, I'm seeking a second.
Second.
Thank you, seconded from Mr. Gonzalez. Counsel, if y'all want to go with this today, if y'all want to stay and discuss, or if you want to postpone, it's up to y'all, these are, they're ready to go, and we've spent quite a bit of time and had a number of people who have way more experience and expertise than I do, and we think we've got it in pretty good shape. I want to thank Mr. Gary in addition to some of the staff liaisons that helped us. And I'm listening to see if there's a motion to postpone, if there's not.
Motion to postpone.
Oh, okay. All right.
Sorry, Mayor, I've hit my ratio.
Your cap, yeah. Um, yeah, no, motion to postpone, my rationale is like, we depend on these boards and commissions to do such a substantial body, or such a substantial amount of work, and I haven't given it the time that it requires to look through.
I think it's good for y'all to go through it, I'm fine with the postponement, so, to the next meeting?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
All right. All right, Ms. Cordova will vote. Mr. Mendoza?
Uh, aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
And Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes seven to zero.
Item 25. Hold discussion regarding the Parks and Recreation Board Recommendation Resolution 2024-01RR-PRB to request the city council implement paid parking in Rio Vista Park and provide directions to the city manager.
Looking for a motion, Ms. Case is here to answer any and all questions. Oh, that's right, oh, wait a minute, we have to provide direction. Okay, yes.
But, no vote. Uh, good evening, Council, Jamie Lee Case, Director of Parks and Recreation. This evening, before you, you have a recommendation from the Parks and Recreation Board recommending paid parking be expanded into Rio Vista Park area. I'm just here to answer any available questions you may have.
So this is to let them work on this more and come back with a plan? Or is this the plan, and we're saying go forth and do whatever it is that you need to do?
It's to gauge your interest, ma'am. To see if the city council is interested in.
That's what I thought, but there's a lot of specificity in here, so I was, yeah. So council, this is if we want them to.
Yeah, we talked about it several times.
Sure, so if the city council does direct us to move forward, we would need to have additional conversations with the Parking Advisory Board and likely the Neighborhood Commission as well, because this would impact neighboring, you know, homes and residents. So we want to make sure that everyone's on the same page and have their support before we move forward with any sort of implementation, because we know that there could be unintended consequences. And then, of course, making sure the Parking Advisory Board is supportive as well.
Okay.
Anything that would be formulated would come back to council for your consideration.
Okay, so Mr. Prather has said, yes, he's willing to move forward on this. Looking to see others? I see a thumbs up from Mr. Gleason. I don't see Mr. Scott anymore, we may have lost.
You got it, Mayor.
Oh, you're there, okay, we've got a yes. I'm all for looking into it, that's not to say I might go, oh, this and not that, but we still have the right to do that, correct?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay.
And if I may for the record, just so that there is no confusion, residents would remain free. That is part of the recommendation, similar to the other paid parking implementation direction that we've received.
Yep. I was, I know it's in there, but I was assuming that, well, I think you said extend, which is, we've already said we're gonna do that, but thank you, because people in the public might get excited over something that might not need to get excited over. Okay, I'm not hearing from the rest of y'all, but we've got four yeses, so we're gonna, we're gonna tell staff to. Go ahead and start working on that.
And Mayor, just as a.
Thanks for bearing with us so late, Ms.
Thank you.
A small but important technicality, I don't know if Mr. Scott is able to get his face back on camera, just to, as a legality, just to have his face visible.
So I need to get somebody else.
For anything requiring a vote would be great, there he is, so just for the last item, it'd be helpful, in case he wants to.
Are you talking about the one we just did?
That, that's okay, we got.
That's okay, we got four members for that, but for 26.
Are you good for that?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, so we're going to get a yes from Mr. Gonzalez. Okay, for item 26, yes, thank you.
Discussing consider appointments to various boards and commissions to whip. A, Citizen Utility Advisory Board. B, Construction Board of Appeals. C, Convention Advisory Bureau's Board. E, Human Services Advisory Board. F, Neighborhood Commission. G, Parking Advisory Board. H, Senior Citizen Advisory Board. H, Citizen Advisory Board. And I thought we had one more.
Veterans Advisory Board.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Council, do we want to move forward with this this evening? We can do some and not others if you wish. I would like to do the Neighborhood Commission because they've been short a couple of people and as y'all probably know, vacancies don't help you when you have quorum because the quorum number is still the same and when you have vacancies, it's even harder. So I'm going to put the names of Estela Enriquez for Sector 5 and Corey Holland for Sector 9. Those are the two vacancies that we have.
I was going to say, I would rather postpone just because I was thinking about this like earlier today. When we, we never, when we have vacancies, we don't reopen applications. We're just pulling from the pool of people who applied in February. So I feel like in two months, like we, you know, we've had time to get more applicants. I don't know, I just, that's just for me.
Additional, yeah, additional applicants have come in. I know one of these came in after we did our others. She didn't have her application in on time, so she was not considered when we did our regular board appointments in February. Anyone who has applied, because people apply all year long, those were in our?
Right, so, right. But my point is like that person applied, but there was no, like, a community at large was unaware that there was like opportunities to fill the vacancies. That's like, that's my point. Like, it's in, it's inconsistent.
Well, when we finished the appointments last time, we had so many people that were willing to serve their community and that were not chosen, who had already had applications in. I had suggested that we give priority to those folks and I thought that council had agreed with us. We certainly don't stop allowing people to apply for those that might have vacancies throughout the year. So I, remind me, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's why we didn't do a blitz like we normally do, is we wanted to go through and see if the people who had already gone to the trouble to apply would like to apply for a different commission and a number of them did, correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
Maybe we had that conversation in the middle of the night because that doesn't sound like something I would support. I think that we're just going to prioritize people just because they got their applications in once upon a time. That's weird to me. So I'm not going to vote on this. I would rather wait on everything, especially Neighborhood Commission because it's like so important. I feel like it's a disservice to some of our neighbors who might have not known that there was vacancies.
Okay. We had done such a big blitz, publicity blitz before the January deadline.
Yes, we did.
And we had such a, a number of applications and quite the diversity in many, many ways. That's why I was okay not promoting it again because they could have applied before. But if you want to postpone, I'll take that motion to postpone. I will withdraw my statement for those two and we can certainly vote on a motion to postpone if we get a second. And that's to do all of them. I just was trying to get those two done. I wasn't going to try to get all of them done, but?
And you always do this just to get, just to push forward. Then, yes, he said second, like, let's just vote and let's go, like, like.
I'm making it clear that I wasn't trying to push all of these through, just the ones that we've got vacancies.
And I feel like I made it clear when I made my motion that I?
And we have a motion to postpone and I'm going to call for the vote on the motion to postpone.
Thank you.
Got it? Let's vote on the motion to postpone.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Garza?
Aye.
Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed seven to zero.
And I didn't ask for clarity, Mr. Gary. Ms. Garza, was that to the next meeting? So it is to the next meeting.
The city council will convene in executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code. A, Section 551.087, economic development to deliberate regarding possible economic development incentives for Project Snapdragon and Project Peanut Butter. Section B, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding a proposed cost-sharing agreement for construction of wastewater treatment plant. C, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. And Section 551.072, real property to receive legal advice and deliberate regarding the possible acquisition of real property interest necessary for the Highway 80 utility project, River Ridge Drainage Project, and Drive Improvements Project. Section D, 551.6072, real property to deliberate regarding the possible disuse or disposition of land in the vicinity of South Edward Gary Street and South LBJ Drive.
All right, as always, we have the same executive session items posted on our three o'clock work session agenda as well as this agenda. Most often, we get those conversations completed during that timeframe. So if staff, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think we need to go into executive session for any rest, for the rest. We concluded everything. So we do not need to go into executive session, so we're ready for item 28.
Consider action by motion of, or provide direction to staff regarding the following executive session items held during the work session and our regular meeting, the ones mentioned above.
And we gave direction to staff on each one of these. Anything that's actionable for us to vote on will come back on a public posted agenda. And now we are to the question and answer portion of our program. Is there anyone here wishing to speak? Question and answer, anybody in the lobby? And there's no one who had signed up in addition who's online, correct?
No, ma'am.
Not on my list. All right. So that concludes that portion of our program. I will take a motion to adjourn.
Let's adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Gonzalez. Ms. Cordova, let's vote.
Ms. Garza? Mayor Houston?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Mendoza?
Aye.
Mr. Prather?
Aye.
Mr. Scott? Adjourn seven to zero.
And we will adjourn our meeting at 11:26.